Good.
All set? All right. Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Selectmen's Meeting. We're going to open the meeting up at the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first order of business this evening is municipal officers workshop business and public hearings, the first of which is a public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-five beach parking pass policy. Mike wanted to just kind of give us a public synopsis, so.
That was great. Thanks for letting me know. Yeah, so as people are aware, every year, the board selectmen revisit the beach parking pass policy. There are a number of nuances this year that they are looking at, many of which have been very well publicized. And tonight, they're here to hear public comment based on from all of you folks, and certainly there's been some play on social media with people with different thoughts and opinions and suggestions. All of those are taken into consideration. And so I'll turn that back over to John about having a public hearing for these folks.
Great. Well, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna open up the public hearing. What we ask is if you come up to the podium, please state your name. Please state your name, and we'll try just, there's a lot of people here, so we'll try to keep it to three or four minutes. I'm not gonna drop the hammer, so to speak, right at the three to four minute mark, just to be respectful of our peers, so everybody has a chance to speak. So at this time, we'll open it up.
Good evening. Mike Carson. Simply put, my wife and I have been tortured enough on a condo in Wells, Maine since nineteen ninety-one. And it has been an extremely pleasurable experience to say the least. Wells, Maine gives you an entirely different perspective of life than, like Maine says, the way life should be. With that said, it appears the past few months, social media has been off the charts regarding the beach passes parking lots. This has always been a concern, but it now has reached its apex. It would be very easy to me to turn this into an outfield report, but I'm not going down. We all know what the term full-time residents are and non-full-time residents mean. And you certainly don't want to get into that because I look at that as just a family of people that are living in Wells, wanting a better way of life, enjoying Wells, Maine. We now know that there are going to be more condos, housing, mobile homes, and this compounds the problem with parking in beach passes. This situation has gone on for years, and it's not gonna get any better unless real-time solutions are addressed and implemented. And I trust that this select line is gonna do its due diligence in coming up with solutions to this, and I have faith in you to do the right thing. I believe it is everybody's responsibility, whether you're a selectman, a resident, a non-full-time, to work together as a team so that we will not be talking about these problems next year, and I thank you for your time.
It's all right.
Jody Sandworm, your findings director. I think I want to comment because what the last gentleman was speaking about is something that's not in the current policy that we're talking about tonight. We did away, I believe, at the last workshop, we talked about giving year-round residents and taxpayers beach stickers, which is in the paperwork that we're discussing tonight. So that, am I correct? But yes, so your concern, we are still gonna issue beach stickers if the policy passes to year-round residents and to taxpayers.
I'm aware, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jody. Yes, sir.
Block Fields, six months resident, twenty-three College Drive, seasonal resident, six months back in Milbury, Massachusetts. I'm here to speak on behalf of the workshop's beach pass proposal. I asked that the board vote in favor of the beach pass recommendation of two passes per resident or taxpayer. Even though we're property owners seasonal, we are here more than just the six months in our summer. We come up during the winter, we come up to pre-loads, we come up to events, we have friends that live in neighboring towns that we come up and visit. We pay our property tax, our electric bills, our gas bills, we pay our seasonal fees. And this is a big one because we're being really forced out by corporate America because our seasonal fees have gone through the roof, as you guys are well known, and corporate America is buying up your town. We visit our local restaurants, shops, markets, our farm, the farms, antique stores, and many other amenities around town, including fishing trips, fishing charters, sightseeing trips. We use all these local amenities through the summer. Local companies come and work on our properties. We use landscapers, we use electricians, HVAC techs, we use plumbers, we use local help when we are up here in the summer. Our trailers need constant work. So we put money into this economy. We feel as though that we're not seasonal, we're part of this community. We love this community. I have friends here that are with me from the same campground, and we all feel the same way. And all I can say is that by eliminating each passes and limit it to one, we know that it's really just going to force people to get there earlier. It's not gonna make things better. At least with two seasonal passes per resident, some of our seasonal people, the wife may not come for the weekend, the husband may come with the kids, so there's only one car and the other car's back home. So it's kind of tough to juggle one pass for two cars. So we agree that there is a problem with limited space, and that would probably have to be addressed, obviously, this summer, it looks like the board is gonna do their due diligence and look at different alternatives and different parking lots, and maybe some public transportation should be phenomenal. But I want to thank the board for their time, the workshop for their time. They did an unbelievable job. Put all that together, there was a lot of stuff on the internet, we've all read it. That's what I mean, like, what do you, Mike took a two-hour ride up here tonight just to make sure that you guys know how the seasonal people feel because, you know, we don't want to be outcasts. We don't want to come up here this summer and feel like, oh, they're the Massachusetts guys. You know, we don't want to be at Billy's or Hobbs and say, oh, they got a beach pass, and you know, it's not good. It's not good for the community, it's not good for relationships. We all want to get along, and I think the board knows that, and I would just ask that the board support the recommendation from the workshop, and I appreciate the time, and I appreciate being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening. My name is Patricia Barson. I want to piggyback what that gentleman basically just said. I'm here on behalf of those by the Sea Association. I embrace this opportunity to discuss a matter that he just mentioned about the accessibility of beach passes for everyone that pays taxes, which I understand from John, I think is your name, that this has been the recommendation of this board. Please be fair and equitable in regards to these beach passes that for decades have never presented a problem such as this, which will only lead to dividing the community rather than uniting us in our efforts. I request that you work towards a responsible solution to this urgent matter, which seems like you are doing that. Property owners that we confronted at the beach, I hear from bough fires in New England, New York, elsewhere at the beach, many of whom are present here tonight to demonstrate just how much time this means to follow them. We made it our business to be here. We drove an hour and a half to one way. Actually, my husband drove, I didn't. Just as they did, to show our solidarity for this urgent matter that not only impacts us, but will also impact our children and our grandchildren. It's within our power to make a difference tonight. I do hope you, you would follow through with that. As the sign states, when you cross the bridge, main the way life should be. The beaches in Wells absolutely reinforce each and every one of those words. Moreover, I believe that Wells Beaches are a piece of heaven that we are blessed to enjoy. Please take this into consideration when voting on this matter, which will impact the entire community. Decision-making isn't easy. I know that very well because I happen to be president of the board by the sea. However, in this case, based on the interest of those present, I hope that you do your due diligence and make a decision that's in the best interest of all property owners. Together, we can be the change we wish to see here in Wells, Maine. Let's make a difference for us and future generations. Thank you very much.
I like to follow when he loads up. Mike Mattrick, a seasonal resident in that Summerhill, CB West, my parents are at Summerhill. My family has been coming here for well over twenty-three years, and typical day in a Mattrick house, my wife, daughter, and I will grab a coffee in the morning, go to the beach, come back, we'll hit up one of the local establishments and probably grab takeout. But my ask to you is, I know there's gonna be some changes with the beach passes, but try to make them this evenly spread out through your seasonals and permanent residents. There's a lot of people up here with children who, their kids live up here now. They grew up here, they live up here, they work here, they support the local environment. They go, they're working at restaurants at night. They need that beach pass during the day. They want to go to the beach, they want to work at local places at night, and it's just, we gotta make a favor to everyone. I mean, they're not doing any damage to your community. We're here to help out, we're here to contribute, whatever you guys ask, so. All I have to say, so, thank you.
Ed Murray, the beach meeting, I'm basically gonna say everything they just said, but I know that you guys are against the law. Issues to address, but if you are looking to make some changes, I, I hope the beach pass thing's gonna work. We're paying taxes year-round for houses we can only use six months a year. We knew that. But one of the selling points was beach, obviously, beach changing. If you do make changes, maybe if you make it to one sticker thing, make a transfer of one car to another, as that gentleman just said. Wife's up here, we're down there, can't shop the cars all the time. It's, it's, it's not feasible. It just doesn't work, and we pay a lot of money to basically live up here for six months. That's basically all I have. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
So just, I just want to clarify that the beach policy as proposed is everybody that was eligible last year is still eligible for a beach pass, and we're trying to limit it down to two passes per parcel that people can buy.
Okay.
The town sells seven thousand beach stickers a year. That's fourteen beach stickers issued for one available parking spot in town. So we're trying to limit the man-hours in the town office selling these and just trying to make it a suitor process by switching to a one-sticker system. So if you have a, if you buy a beach sticker, you can go to a transfer station, in place for it, so. So that's what we're trying to establish here. So I just wanted to clarify that part of the policy.
So what Chris means by the one-sticker system is going to a multi-pass. One of the pieces of feedback that we got was that when we implemented the transfer station sticker, now you had to have two stickers on your car, and initially, they were both going in the front window, which I believe violates state law.
Yes.
So we had that issue to deal with, and one other request from the community was just to be able to consolidate that. That way, you only have one sticker still, so that's what that one sticker policy is.
Thank you. Yeah, and having a sticker on the front of the car and the back of the car, us as enforcement, the view stickers on the back of the car, our people don't know where to look. It's on bumper, it's on the window. Some people put it on the inside of a tinted window. So if we could just move everything back to the front windshield, it'd be a lot easier. The transfer station sticker was never about revenue, and it was about proving that we're eligible to go to the transfer station. So we can just combine them, open sales up in November, so we spread out the season. It'll make things a lot easier.
Thank you. Sorry, hand up back here.
I want to clarify a question I want to say. If you have, if you have, if you have a single-use, essentially, it's the sticker applies to both.
Yes.
So just, so I just give you my, our example. We put, we put the, the transfer sticker on my pickup, and we put the beach pass on my wife's SUV.
Yep.
And we take the SUV down to Great Isle.
You can still, you can still buy a transfer sticker for five dollars. You can still do, you can still do that.
No, I can still, I can still put the sticker on there, so I don't have, we don't have to use one card to go to both the transfer station and.
Correct. Right. Your transfer station stickers will still be available, but what this is, is just instead of having a beach sticker, a transfer station sticker for people that utilize both services, you get one sticker for that. You can still get a standalone transfer station sticker as well. So if you have that vehicle that you prefer to take to the transfer station, you can just buy that sticker for that vehicle and take that vehicle, and then you have your multi-pass in your other vehicle. You decide you want to take that to the transfer station on the way to the beach, now you can because the sticker works for both.
So effectively, it doesn't affect, unlike the seasonal people, where the two cars come back from.
That's, well, that's a whole different issue. You'll be able to buy, I appreciate, I appreciate that if you buy two beach standards, one for each.
Yeah, I see another handups. Yeah, please come up to the podium if you don't mind.
This is probably a silly question.
No such thing.
Okay, so what if you already bought your transfer station ticket, and then this multi-use thing comes out, like, do I take the transfer thing just off and put this new one on?
We'll be talking about, yeah, if, I expect that would be the answer right there, correct? That is accurate.
That does sound like a cheap scheme, but can I get five dollars off?
We're gonna talk about that tonight.
Okay, thanks.
So my name's Donna Kempkin. I'm a seasonal taxpayer. I've been trying to follow this whole thing from February, watching the selectman meetings online and whatnot. So it is a little confusing, so it's helpful when someone's, you know, just confirms right up from the get-go. No one's losing their beach pass. There are two per parcel. My question is, are you doing away with the reserved spaces for taxpayers?
One of the proposals.
I know, don't do it. Because that's kind of like part of, you know, the bonus, you know? You might pull in at eleven o'clock in the morning, and there might be one, you know, resident space available, so.
Thank you.
Avery. Avery Suter. The issue of parking seems to be a geometry problem, right? There's not enough spots for the amount of people that want to go to beach. I think that the most practical way to let some of that pressure out is gonna be to provide some reasonable alternatives for. For example, if you want to go down to Casino Square, if you're on foot, it's not a complete side, right? You can get down from the light, and then there's a sidewalk a little bit, and then it stops, and you get a sidewalk over the bridge, and then it stops again for the rest of the way down. I think completing that, making a safe place for people to walk down to the beach is a pretty, a good goal for, for this town. And of course, transportation, right? Bringing the trolleys back at the blue line. I understand there's some pretty serious challenges to doing that, but I don't think it's impossible, and I think it's necessary so that people can get around our town without having to drive everywhere that they want to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Avery.
What do you like, anybody else like to speak on this topic at this time? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing and move into discussion?
I move to close the public hearing and move into discussion.
Second. Folds in favor? Five-zero. All right, at this time, we'll open it up to board discussion.
There was one, one comment in respect to keeping the taxpayer spots.
Can't hear anything.
I said there was one comment in respect to keeping the taxpayer resident spots available, and I'm actually in favor of that. I know it creates some issues, returns some reinforcement, but it's like, like was said, it's one of the things that people vote for, you know, you're a taxpayer and a resident, and there's not a space reserved for you anyway, and that doesn't make sense.
All right, agree with you, Jim. And actually, I would, so just my thoughts on it. I don't mind sharing them upfront if you guys want to discuss them. I think that we pretty much just leave the entire thing alone, except the multi-pass, issue the multi-pass. I think this year, my opinion is that we leave that multi-pass forty dollars. That way, if you have a transfer station sticker, it's, you've paid your five, you would have spent the forty on the beach sticker anyway, so you're not really incurring any extra cost at all. We want to look in November and look at increasing the cost of a beach sticker at that juncture, we could. And but as far as like the veterans parking, I have a friend of mine who's a Vietnam War veteran. He doesn't have a veteran's plate. He doesn't live in Wells, so it doesn't apply to him, but I know there are other people in this circumstance. You know, should that person be precluded from having that spot just because they don't want the plate? I don't feel good about that. I don't feel particularly good about eliminating the taxpayer spots. So I, I would just say, let's just look at the multi-pass and maybe just keep that V at the point. It's my opinion.
And I, I actually agree with the forty dollars yourself.
We've only been with the, believe me, I was, my son was the one that came up with the veteran's spot, and I was a little smarter. How do you enforce it? Does the person just say, I'm a veteran? And that's how we afford it. How are the police supposed to know that person's a veteran? We, we know this happens every day. You go down to Hanford, there's four thousand parking spots reserved for everything under the sun, and then you're allowed to park way out back here, but everybody just parks there. I, I I fought the veteran rights my whole, my whole life, but the only way we can enforce it is to have the license plate. There's nothing else identifying a person as a veteran except for them to be honest about it, but we have people that are desperately trying to build beach halls and say it's open, and they park there. We know this fact. It's, it's not, I'm not making this up, it's so fact. So if we don't have that license plate as an identifying feature for those veterans, how else do we do it?
Well, as I understand it, we only sell a very limited number of beach passes that had veterans on it, under a hundred.
Well, see, and that's the, that's the problem is, the path is at a discount now, and the only way to buy that is in person because there's no way to distinguish the different prices online.
Right.
For veterans.
What my suggestion would be is, we have the one beach sticker, and then for those individuals who have proved that they're veterans, have some sticker that you put on the other one before you put it on the window, so it indicates veteran. I mean, it's a star or, or something like that. And it's only a few.
I think this, this solution would be to offer a veteran pass at the same price of forty dollars.
Yeah.
And maybe a different color sticker or something. I don't need a different color. Read it.
Mr. Jim, may I ask if Jody could speak on some of the logistics?
Well, Jody, yeah, Jody wants to come up and sit with us.
Office encounters in those situations.
So I guess my questions are, and I'll leave guidance for the board. Is the veteran sticker a multi-pass sticker? So that I know what to order, and I need a price for it. And if it is gonna be a price other than forty dollars, they will have to be a sticker. Well, a veteran sticker is gonna have to be issued in office only or through the mail. Like, will not be able to be purchased on the web because my system will not allow me to put in who's a veteran and who's not a veteran.
So how many veterans?
We, we ordered a thousand, we sold seven hundred and something.
So it is a significant, more significant.
And so, and my staff's here, but the process for us to issue a veteran sticker, if your license, if your registration when you come in does not say it's a veteran plate, we ask that person if they have any military ID, do they have their D and two fourteen? So we're asking them for proof that they're a veteran because I can't distinguish.
They have a veteran sticker.
If they're playing.
Years, you already know.
So the system does not track that. It's fresh every year, so we don't, and we don't physically hold those documents in our office. So every year, the veteran has to provide that information. Sometimes it's a spouse that's coming in that does not have the information, so those are the things that we have.
I'm, I think one of the questions, one of the ideas that you had, that if they got a regular beach pass sticker and they parked in the veteran slot, they would either have to have a veteran's license plate or they would have to have a, something that showed that they were a veteran or give that they found in the front window or something. And, and you would, and that way, there's not the different stickers you have to do because there's only so many slots anyway. And part of the whole process that we went through to even look at this again was that how much time in the, in the office when there are taxes due and cars to register, all that. It, you know, it's a, it's a very tough time for them, and when people want to come and register their car, they have to wait an hour in line for people that are just getting beach passes. And so we were trying to make that whole thing a little more efficient, so we, the police were telling us what it would make it easier for them to be able to be enforcing quickly without causing somebody a hassle if everybody understood, there'd be less signs, there would be, there will be less things if you had a beach pass sticker, whether it was a taxpayer or not, you get down there and, and you get there in time for your beach pass to work. So that's the whole idea behind this. There wasn't any more, we weren't gonna make any more money. We were trying to make it more efficient and more streamlined, yeah, more streamlined for everybody. That's the whole reason, and the, the fifty dollar cost was to help with that cost, five-dollar increase for, for the beach sticker and five dollars. So we said, the, the transfer set piece is five dollars, and if you've paid for one already, that means for one year, you pay five dollars extra. And what that five dollars means, and that's all that, the cost, that's the cost of printing that sticker, right? Oh, Jody, we, we, that's not, we don't make anything on those stickers, but what we do have, what does happen when we have the the transfer station stickers is that it prevents, and we had a lot of this, people from outside of the town bringing trash into our town and costing a lot of money, tires and all that. So that made it one heck of a lot more efficient. So if you're a taxpayer or a resident, and you is, are the two categories, then you would put fifty dollars, ten dollars more, you're gonna get the, it's really five dollars more for the beach sticker, which is gonna help defray some of the costs of the extra hours it takes to do all of those, and five dollars for the tax, for the sticker, for the beach pass, that combination is, is where it's going. It's not, I just want to say that the whole reason for doing this was trying to make it a little more streamlined for everybody at every level, including the people that are parking, not knowing if they can pay here or whatever. The signs are confusing, so that was the whole goal behind this, so I just want you to understand that. So I thought fifty dollars is fair, you know, to do that. I know forty dollars sounds like nobody wants to change, but guess what? Everything goes up and down, and the truth is, everybody wants to be at the beaches, residents and taxpayers, campground people, I don't blame you. That's a beautiful asset that we have, but we can all work together to make it a little more comfortable and more feasible for the town that's doing all the work for you to get those passes and make sure you have those conveniences and pay fairly. So I think the fifty dollars is more than fair. I think the veterans thing should be the same thing. They park, and that's what we were gonna do. They can park actually any, anywhere, and they just, but they, if they have their veterans pass, they can park any place that's available. They don't have to wait for just a veteran's place. They can park anywhere, which I think is fair to the veterans as well.
Yeah, so actually, in your speaking, Kathy gave, gave me an idea. So we would have one beach pass there, and then any veteran who doesn't have a veteran's plate, if we had a relatively cheap printed-up cardboard If we had a relatively cheap printed up cardboard thing that goes out of the mirror that says veteran on it. They could stop down at any time to just prove that they're a veteran. You give them one of those. It's not good for anything. You can't allow the beach there. It would be a way to sell both products.
Good idea, Jim.
I mean, if you guys, yeah, that's, that's one way of doing it. If you want to do that, we just thought that way. If, if it was something like that, if it's someone driving around the parking lot, they would have to get out, look at the front of the car. Again, it's not streamlining anything. The streamline was the plate easy. You drive around the parking lot, they get the veteran's plate, they get the sticker on the car, will be done. So a lot of this wasn't, you know, we're not, we're not trying to pick on anybody. That's not, that's not what we do. And you know, the same with the mooring holders. That, I think that's still on your, maybe I shouldn't have brought it up, but, but they, in the past, we, we suggested the ten mooring spots because a lot of times they're not even used. Well, what they don't understand, they complain, you know, we've heard a few comments about the ten, they only had fifteen in the past.
Depending on the day.
Depending on the day of the week. Again, something that was convoluted, you know, between, you know, Monday. Monday through Friday, you can have this many till noon time and this many. It was extremely convoluted. We're just trying to clean it up. We're trying to streamline it. We're trying to make it user friendly for everybody, for the user, for us, everybody. You know, we're not, we're not against anybody. That's not what this is about. It's to make it easier for Jody and her staff, which I think is important. And easier for the people in the parking lots themselves. So that's, that's what this.
Well, looking at veteran thing, you would rather have something in the rear window?
No, in the front.
No.
Well, in the front. So if they don't get on, on the mirror.
Yeah. And then, whatever. Like I said, if that's what you want to do, but I don't.
That's if they don't have plates.
Yeah.
If they, yeah, if they don't have a plate.
Yeah. And I have someone that works for me that's a veteran that doesn't have a plate either, you know? He didn't, he didn't think what we suggested was a bad idea. He says, I've got the sticker, I can pack anywhere in the parking lot. Same with the mooring holders. They can pack anywhere in the parking. They don't have to park in those ten spots.
Uh, two, well, two, two per.
Veterans two, mooring's ten.
And I just think a suggestion there, Jim, there are other changes in this particular policy that we're looking at tonight. Am I not correct?
There's the, there's the mooring holders, there's the, the veterans parking, there's the taxpayer parking, there's the multi-pass. And I think there was one other.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that.
Oh, yeah, there's this delivering the stickers to two per household. That was the other one. Two per five proposals total.
So.
Jody, can you clarify, are there presently two different stickers in the regular one and the veteran's one, or are we adding?
So in my twenty twenty-four world, I had a mooring sticker. I had a veteran sticker and I had a beach sticker and I had a transfer station sticker. When we started our talks for twenty twenty-five, we talked about the idea of a beach sticker or a multi-purpose sticker, a multi-use sticker. The policy in front of us tonight just has a multi-use sticker.
In the, in the transfer station.
And, and the transfer station sticker is already established, that's.
Yeah, that's different.
So Patrick, it was, somebody mentioned adding something to the sticker, something to signify that is different than everything else. Would that be a hardship on, on you folks if you were?
So it's going to be another step. So if you want us to put a star on it, we can do that. I'm going to speak with my other hat. I'm not a veteran. I see a person has a gold star on their sticker. Perhaps I'm going to throw a gold star on my sticker.
And Jody is actually timed, Jody is timed out. How long it takes to issue a sticker. Jody did that and that it was very timed, it's on to, to issue.
If you want me to have a veteran sticker, I'm gladly partner that. I just want to.
I think.
Not for my new year.
I think the, I think the multi-pass would work. I like Jim's idea and we could just order a placard right on something. I mean, as easy as this to print order and just keep them at the town hall. So if somebody actually had that issue when they were a veteran, they didn't have the plate and just hang it in the window.
And, you know, honestly, that would work because in reality, there's only two parking spots in the parking lot. It's going to be four of them. You're going to be able to park in them, so that's, that would work.
So we order chain tags.
Yeah.
For our staff, something.
Or just, you know, you could even make your own, you know what I mean, to just print down a, how many are you going to have, maybe seven hundred and fifty? A lot of people have their, their license plates already, you know, and so it might not be that many. So but we need one sticker that would be a multi-use. Right?
Yes.
And fifty dollars, that's what I'm proposing. So I think that's very fair. And then, and then the placard for the, hang on the mirror for the veterans. And we changed the mooring things and this. I know, but it's in here, so.
Tim, did you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to remind, it's not just a veteran plate, it's a, it's a W plate, it's any other plate that signifies that you were in. I, you know, I mean, just so we understand, we're not just looking for the main veteran, we're looking for a vet, a plate, anything. And if you have that, you do not have to get the placard.
I think it just goes out with the sticker. But can we also clarify, the chief had mentioned disabled veterans? I believe a disabled plate does not need a parking sticker, so they probably have to park there.
Purple hard does. There's a, there's a lot of categories in different states of different categories.
But you commonly recognize those all the things that are on vehicles, all right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
As far as mooring holder spots, Kathy brought that up, discussion on that.
Right, because I think, because each of the, there's several other things in here, so not just the beach thing. So we really need to kind of go through that, I think.
We had five, folks.
Yeah.
We've been through quite a few, I think that, I think that.
The mooring is left and then that's it.
I think the mooring at ten is fair. I think it's, a lot of times you go down there and there's empty parking spots and we're trying to fill it up and there, there's no one in, I mean, it gets frustrating for everyone that there's no one in those spots. I think ten is fair. They have the whole other side, you know, I mean, it's free parking. As a boat, you know, I mean, again, it's a little bit more of a, ten is fair.
Well, they can also still use all the regular spots too. I mean, when, when we went out fishing one time, we left really early. I mean, most people weren't even up there. At that point in the day of the parking lot, you're going to have a choice, pick the spots anyways.
You don't have a special place where you can get a thing next year.
With the beach passes, absolutely.
Yeah, just so people are aware, we have a, a mobile trailer that will be coming in tomorrow. And we've nicknamed it the Beach Pass Express. So for those of you who experienced standing in line for an hour or two last year because people were registering cars, paying taxes. The Beach Pass Express will be available to you. It will have two processors in there for people that are seeking just a beach pass. Our goal is to try to diminish those who are standing in town hall for multiple purposes. Beach Pass Express will serve you and we hope we can move you through quickly.
Did you say tomorrow?
It won't be available tomorrow. We don't have stickers for waiting. The trailer will, the, the, the trailer will be here tomorrow, but it'll be probably four to six weeks before we have stickers in hand. You can come look at it.
And the preference is to purchase a sticker online rather than come to town hall.
Absolutely. We hope to automate this process more and more as we all become more accustomed to online purchases. And as we streamline the process, we hope that we can move to a more automated process to make it much easier for all of you and for us.
I would just like to thank everybody for being here. It's important that we understand how, why we're doing it and you understand, we understand why you want to keep it a certain way. So thank you for that and help, and thank you for helping us move forward in a more efficient way, for your sake as well as all of us. Do you think I'm watching?
Well, I, we have a three on six, but there's been no agreement.
Yeah, let's, let's agree on the cost of a sticker first.
I actually agree with Kathy on this one. I think it's a minor increase to go to fifty dollars. But it also gives us some seed money to work towards a, a long-term solution for the future. And I think that's maybe the most important part. In addition to getting everyone their beach passes, is coming up with something that allows more people to park, more people get down to the beach in the future. So we're not running into this logjam picture. So, Mr. Chair.
I ask if Jody can clarify where the money for beach passes, how that is expended. We can talk a little bit, and I've heard people talk about maybe make money in many, many years, we do not make, we lose money. But Jody, can you clarify for the public where we spend the beach pass money?
And the parking money.
Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
I want to say back like twenty thirteen, don't, don't be on the year. The town decided to create a beach enterprise. So what that means is the money that is taken at the meters and for the sale of seasonal beach passes pays to support all of the staffing that you see down there. So the my lifeguards, my community service officers, the beach cleaning, the restroom cleaning. Any thing we purchased, if a restroom needs repairs, anything that operates the beach, that is where your money's going for. There is no taxation dollars. So any part of your tax bill does not go to beach enterprise. So the money that we take in has to cover all our expenses. So when we're looking at doing capital upgrades in the future, we want to have money in that fund so that we can possibly build a new restroom or, you know, one, the showers and things like that. If we have to pay the lot, that's going to come from the money that we brought in in prior years for the sale of beach passes for the people that pay the meter.
Well, brings up another question. When's the last time, when, when did we increase the meter cost to five dollars?
Um, we, the sticker price has been the same since twenty nineteen and the parking fee I want to say increased in twenty, for the hourly lot was like twenty-one, I believe.
Five?
Yeah.
To five.
It was either twenty or twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two, right around there. But the beach sticker itself has been forty since twenty nineteen.
So if we increase the hour and we bring from five to six, what was that? That'd be a substantial money.
We, yeah, we. Yeah, that, that.
I, I don't know. I, when I look, when you suggested that, Jim, I, I, I looked at everyone else. We're, we're actually where everyone else is and we're going to be high compared to other towns. I, I don't know increasing the hourly rate is where I'd want to go right now.
The surrounding towns were at three or four dollars, most of them, four, twenty dollars for the day. We're, we're kind of highest at five.
And I, I'll remind you that Beach Use on Wells Beach is about half the time of any other beach in York County. From, let's say, a quarter mile past Casino Square to the jet you can use. And then the rest of the beach, you can't use it many times and people pay them. The hourly rate, they had down there and they're like, oh, there's no beach. And they turn around and walk back. You know, so I, I don't know that it's, we'd have to have somebody there saying, hey, do you realize you're parking here, but there's no beach? Like, you know, do you, I, I just.
I, I think the other thing, the meters pretty much take care of themselves. We're looking at increasing because of the labor and the cost and the, and the, and the, um, the time that it takes to do things. That's, that's, and the beach pass hour is a good deal. You know, you get down there.
And if you stayed at the fifty, you go there for ten hours, you park for free the rest of the season.
Right. So fifty dollars is good.
Then two per car, that was the other.
Yeah, two per car, I think is good. Two per parcel, which is.
Yeah, sorry, not car, I'm sorry. We lost the conversation. Per parcel.
Oh, two per parcel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you didn't make the motion on that.
So we get a decision making process, just with respect to the money. A cost per sticker, I'd like to move that we make it forty dollars instead of fifty dollars. It's a motion. There's no second amendment.
I don't think I can second it, so.
I'll make a motion that we make that fifty dollars.
Is that the transfers sticker as well?
Yes, includes it. That is the multi, which I don't know, the multi.
Let's see, do you want to break these out or do you want to just take it as a block for the recommendation proposal as a whole? We'd have to break it out because we have the taxpayer spots that Jim brought up, but I think it sounds like. Yeah, take it, we'll just, we'll go individual items from the five.
So Kathy, make your move. You made a motion on fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars for the multi sticker, yeah?
Well, second.
Thanks.
All those in favor? All those opposed? It's three, two.
Okay, so next up is making the more.
Not having the taxpayer.
The resident taxpayer spaces. Passing resident taxpayer.
Well, I think the proposal was to eliminate, yes, but.
So on the taxpayer spots, so if we leave it as it is and we have to go pick them up, we have to go put out seventy signs in all of our parking lots right now. And that gives you a ratio of, we issue ninety-seven beach stickers per one reserved taxpayer spot. And as somebody that's out in the field seeing this, they're full. If you don't get to the beach by ten AM, eleven AM on this day, every spot's full. They, they don't matter. It's sign solution. It's just, it really doesn't do anything. It's more of like a feel-good placebo effect to see, to see signs. So that's, that's, that's my piece on that.
And there is some confusion there because then you'll have people that come in with a sticker, the residents or that, and they'll come around and they'll say, and there was a comment online, there's a couple of comments about it. Well, I, I come into the parking lot and the taxpayers is out of state places in the taxpayer slots. All their taxpayers too. So there's confusion and that's, we're trying to eliminate a lot of the confusion. And that's where, that's why that got put in the proposed, one of the proposals.
And we as a police department don't want to do, somebody parking ticket that came to park at the meter and put parts in this. So that's, that's what we see.
So we wouldn't have any designated, all, all the parking spots are open to any entity. There's come first, yeah, there's come first, just like it all, yeah. Except for the two guys.
The proposal, I believe, was worded, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jody, but it was to eliminate the taxpayer reserve spots.
Correct.
So the motion should be phrased somewhere along those.
I made the motion that we remove the taxpayer, the designated taxpayer parking spots.
Second. All those in favor? Three, all opposed? Two? All right. Uh, we have the veteran's spots.
Yep. I think, I'll make a motion that the veteran gets the pass, the beach pass that looks just like everybody else's. And in, when it's given to them, they are provided a placard that they can hang on their, um, a front or put on their front dash. Even if they have a plate, just give one to everybody that does that. So that's what I make the motion.
All those in favor? Five zero, that's unanimous. Right, we had the mooring holders. And that, that, that proposal was to reduce the amount of mooring holder spots to ten.
Seven, seven days a week. I'll make a motion that we reduce the designated mooring spots to ten and they'll be in place seven days a week.
And that's at the eastern shore only.
At the eastern shore only.
All those in favor? Five zero, that's unanimous. Then we have the two stickers per parcel.
I make a motion that we limit the beach passes to two stickers per parcel.
Second. All those in favor? Five zero, that's unanimous. Did we miss anything, Jody?
I don't believe so.
It was a small typo in the proposal. I don't know if we're going to approve the rest as proposed. Section ten finds. It says, parking ticket will be issued based on the current name state.
I know, but that should, should still remain.
Exactly. So we could just.
Two hundred for handicap violation to two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And do we, could we get a motion to accept the proposal outside of what, I don't know how you want to phrase it, but outside of the changes that we've made at, at motion to accept that is?
I made the motion that we accept the proposal as presented tonight, accepting what we've already voted on.
And correcting the word statute.
And correcting the word statute. Thank you. Thank you.
Second. All those in favor? Go ahead, Jim, sorry.
I, I said this last year and I'll say it again this year. Number two, two operational hours. Operational hours for collecting parking fees, eight AM to six PM. From Saturday, Memorial Day weekend to Monday, Columbus Day. Columbus Day is not a legal holiday in Maine. So I would recommend if you want to use the word Columbus Day, put a slash and put Indigenous People's Day after it. Recognizing the people that recognize that date as Columbus Day and also recognizing people that recognize that day as Indigenous People's Day.
Well, you have discussion after you have a second.
Are we going to be a second from here?
She has a motion, a second.
A second, okay, good.
So I would like to amend that motion to, in number two operational hours, after the word Columbus Day, we would slash and then put Indigenous People's Day to recognize the legal holiday in Maine.
But keep Columbus Day as well.
Keep it, keep Columbus Day. Keep it, keep Columbus Day as well.
I don't have an issue with that.
I accept that.
Could I just say, the signs say Indigenous.
Yeah, right, right.
And.
Just, just so you know.
So it makes more sense to say.
Either way.
Okay, so that too, we add that, okay, make a motion to.
We have to act on that amendment first and then act on legal motion.
Okay, I was just gonna.
So I made that motion. There's, there's a second to that. Indigenous People's Day.
Do we have a vote on Jim's amendment? All in favor?
All in favor.
Five, zero, okay, now let's carry out the original. We had a second. All in favor of passing the, uh, policy as proposed?
Accepting what we've already voted for, yeah.
Propose an amendment.
Second.
Well, we had a second. Five, zero. Thanks.
Okay, just, I, I wanna thank staff and, uh, on behalf of me, I apologize because. You put in a ton of work to this. I don't think we've really saved you any time. And I, that's just my opinion. It's one person's opinion up here. And I appreciate the work he did and I think we failed to supplement to help you streamline this. I apologize. I'm like, that's one person. I don't think we streamlined you at all.
You'll see us back in July. Looking forward to November.
At least we moved to the street side, yes.
And the other thing that I'd like to say is I was really impressed with the discussion on the fourth night. Uh, the views, the, the people who talked at the open forum part of it, at the. Actually express our views as well. We feel the same way that I felt as you. And, uh, thank you for, like, supporting that discussion.
Absolutely. Fortunate to be part of this community and it is one community, not many. So thank you all for coming.
I do wanna clarify. So we're looking to work with the board so that, starting in November, when we issue new transfer station stickers. We will actually be issuing either a transfer station sticker or the multi use pass. So when we get to April May next year. You won't have to come see us for your beach pass. You'll have already done it. So it will be good conversations in July.
Yeah, uh, well, yeah, we can't, procedurally, we have to go to our next public hearing, which is on the ordinance, um, the next ordinance. If you'd like to comment, sir, there is gonna be an open to the public session after we get through this. And I'd invite you to come up at that time. All right, so we'll give everybody a second. Anybody that's interested in leaving at this point, it's gonna give you a minute to clear out.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not trying to be tense. You want me to.
She just don't forget some minor changes you may not.
I, I read. All right. At this time, we're going to move on to a public hearing on in ordinance to amend chapter one forty-five land use of the code of the town of Wells. To revise definitions, district regulations and performance standards to allow cannabis stores in the general bus- business district. We would ask that you come up to the podium. We would ask that you come up to the podium, state your name. It's time we're going to open it up to the public. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Nancy Corn and I'm here to speak in favor of the planning board recommendation. Not to allow adult use marijuana in the town of Wells. Due to not being in accordance with one forty-five dash sixty-one, two, or six for the following findings. Proposed amendment will materially benefit the public by increasing marijuana use, increasing traffic on Route One. And increasing incidences of operating a vehicle under the influence. Number two, no change of circumstance as regards to warrant a need for additional properties. To provide marijuana product, products. Number three, better statute to not allow marijuana sales. I'm not gonna go into the details of what one of those, but I have additional information to share. The one about increasing sales and all of that, let's just take a look first off of the National Center for Drug Abuse Statistics. Teenagers in Maine are forty-seven point forty-four percent more likely to have used drugs in the last month than the average American teen. Eleven thousand or twelve point twenty-eight percent of twelve to seventeen year olds. Reported using drugs in the last month. Among them, ninety point ninety-one percent reported using marijuana in the last month. Seventeen point eighty-six percent of all twelve to seventeen year olds reported using marijuana in the last year. Those statistics are horrible. Nor should we ignore the consequences of mari- marijuana use by our teens and young adults. And I deep, I attached a report bearing the disturbing title, one tenth of Maine high schoolers drove under the influence of marijuana. That was issued in April nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-four. Well, this finding from a major research study on the impact of marijuana use on motor vehicle safety in general. Drivers who consume cannabis within three hours of driving are nearly twice as likely to cause a vehicle collision. As those who are not under the influence of drugs or alcohol. I think it is clear that their opposition to passing this. Is clear because it will create more problems than we already have, which are certainly significant. Now, um. The, uh, people. Uh, who are applying for this, that was the reason that the planning board gave for. Saying that they recommended not approving this. The people applying for this made the counter argument, adult use is regulated at a lower level by the state than medical use. Both on enforcement, record keeping, marching in front of test. Customers may receive a better product by allowing adult use sales. The meridian that is questionable is May. We don't know that. And one of the reasons we don't know it, as this is not always the case. Maine lawmakers question right now why cannabis report was withheld. That the cannabis report that was supposed to be given to the legislature was not given for over a year. There is articles out now that they are having a committee hearing to find out why that report was delayed. The person responsible for it said they didn't wanna interrupt the legislative process last year by bringing up those statistics. That is not a reason to withhold the report. What is in that report? We still don't know. The other thing that they said is in the committee hearings, that there seemed to might be some. Now, seasons going on, okay? And whereby somebody involved in administering this was also involved in some contracts that might be. Difficult to explain his lack of recusing himself. So we do not know, first off, we don't have the report. Secondly, we don't know what's in the report. And third, there may be erroneous or difficult information to explain in that report. So no, it is mainly seeking a better product by allowing adult use. We do not know that. We just don't know. And again, if reports are being withheld to cover our issues with regard to the adult use industry. The nomadic level of regulation on the books, the actual effectiveness of the regulation is in doubt. Okay, number two. This is, the proposed amendment is warranted because of changed circumstances or because of a need for additional property in the proposed owning district. Well, the reason that the planning board decided to recommend against this. The limit of three medical uses sites established in June twenty twenty-three is the only recent change in circumstances. Which is not related to allowing adult use. Three sites have been approved. There has been no interest by the town to allow additional properties to sell marijuana products. The desire of an owner to expand their market into adult use does not qualify as a need of the town. That's their state. The people who are making the application counter. Maine residents voted in twenty sixteen to allow recreational marijuana sales and use. State laws adopted in twenty nineteen allowed towns to adopt ordinance for the sale of adult use recreational marijuana products. State law allows the sales of local residents and seasonal visitors currently have limited options in Wells to purchase recreational marijuana products. I would de- probably disagree that there are only limited options to Wells residents to purchase recreational marijuana. I made it, I just went searching. Google, it's wonderful. I didn't even use AI, just played on Google. Here's the list of stores selling recreational marijuana with an approximately fifteen to twenty minute drive of my house in Wells. Not that I'm going there, but just in case, all right? And they all even offer online ordering. This is much quicker than I can get anywhere in town using Route One during the summer. So I wouldn't come down here anyway because it would take longer, okay? The ordinance change would also allow far. Allow for as many as three marijuana retail stores in Wells. Because every one of them could elect to do becoming an outlet for maro- for recreational marijuana. Presumably for far exceeding the needs of visitors and tourists. But just for an idea, in Sanford, there's two stores thirteen and fifteen minutes away. In Burmeh, there's three stores sixteen, sixteen, and twenty minutes away. And in Bedford, there's one store twenty minutes away. Anybody want the list later? I'll give it to you. Okay? The nearest closest recreational marijuana store to Wells that I could find is in twenty, is in Elliot, twenty-six minutes from my house. And it's owned by J R Consulting. As can be seen in this map of recreational marijuana stores in our area, which is in here if anyone wants to see it. There are no recreational marijuana stores that I could find along the coast in York County. Having recreational marijuana stores in Wells would fill the hole in the map. And they weld the go-to spots for marijuana shopping in southern coastal Maine. There is a big hole right here, Kenny Bunk, Wells, Hittery, York. It's all inland, folks. Nobody on the coast wants that. Okay. Then the neutral part. The town of Wells voted yes, three thousand four hundred and twenty-three versus no, three thousand two hundred and sixty-two and twenty sixteen to eleven. That is correct. The state voted yes, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five votes, of which, uh, they voted yes. Yes, three eight, they voted. Three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four votes, yes, three thousand eight hundred and eight, three thou- three hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight. Versus no, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three. That the residents of the town of Wells voted yes to legalize marijuana in Maine in twenty sixteen, which we did. Is irrelevant. Because in June twenty seventeen, the residents of Wells went to the polls and chose to limit the sale of marijuana in Wells by voting to allow. Medical marijuana dispensaries only and prohibit marijuana retail and social clubs. As to the question of whether the proposed amendment is warranted because of changed circumstances. The only argument that I have seen presented by the applicants for allowing medical marijuana dispensaries to convert their businesses into selling only. Recreational marijuana is the following statement by Joel Peppin, one of the owners of J, JR Consulting. As reported in the Portsmouth Herald on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Quote, Peppin said, the medical market of cannabis is shrinking. With the adult use recreational market beginning to take a larger share of the time. We feel the customer pool may be larger for adult use cannabis down here. So that's the main reason for it all, he said about the application. This is not a change cir- this is mine now, end quote. This is not a changed circumstance in Wells, only a changed circumstance for the financial viability of their company. That is not a reason for amending a Wells ordinance. Not much more. Uh, and number three, no problem. Their property would not accommodate the proposed parking. The response was. They can amend the site plan, no problem. Uh, and the existing thing, all three existing sites would have to make adjustments. The proposed amendment is in accord with Wells comprehensive plan in five. I actually kinda disagree with that. Because actually in two thousand and. In twenty nineteen, John Carter made the claim. When we wanted to not have an adult business on Route One in Wells. John Carter referred to, we worked with our comprehensive plan of two thousand and five and looked at what the values and visions of this community were in two thousand and five. And going forward, they're family friendly, they're looking for businesses that are more towards the tourist, family oriented side, he said. We have been able to do that, I think, in this community. We've been successful in having a great school system, having businesses that contribute to our community. We understand that and want to keep that. The thing that was done then was to limit where an adult business could go because we could have banned it to the light industrial district. That is not Route One in Wells. Having these in the general dis- district automatically having a medical marijuana one set this up for us to be talking about this tonight. The light industrial district is a far different thing than having three on Route One. And that was what the council was, was made back in, uh, twenty nineteen. Yes, you can have your business light industrial district. They decided not to have it in Wells at all. Because it was not conducive to their business to be there. So, yes, we have referred to the two thousand and five comprehensive plan and decided what ordinances we pass. And until the comprehensive plans revise, I think that's what we have. Okay, and in number, where are we? Um, and last but not least. Uh, marijuana sales are illegal by federal law. That is number six. And that is true. We have no idea what is going to happen with that. We don't and shouldn't be making ordinances based on whether or not we're going to say we're gonna. Abide by federal law, but not abide by federal law. That is not our decision to make. Right now, marijuana sales are illegal by federal law. The fact that people have turned a blind eye to enforcing those laws. They turned a blind eye to enforcing a lot of laws. That doesn't mean we break them. We just have to abide by what the law is and hope that not too many people break them. So, um, and then, last but not least. I started to think further because up in the legislature, they're discussing the possibility now. Of having a committee to study having social clubs. So if that would have passed. We would have, if we allowed the sale of recreational marijuana in Wells, we would be faced now. Well, are we going to allow the sale of social clubs? Because now it would be legal in Maine law, which it is not now. That is stripped from the original law by another law to remove social clubs out of this. Part here because May would have been the only one that allowed social clubs. So that is removed eventually by another statute. And the third thing. I came across. An interesting thing. Whereby we now have family friendly cannabis campgrounds, private campgrounds. And they're allowed because of a legal loophole. It is private property and this has not been challenged. There's a really thriving run in Harrison. So if our campground was to come to us and say, well, marijuana is legal around. Retail marijuana is legal, why can't we turn our campground into a cannabis friendly campground? And it's on Route One or it's up wherever. We, I don't know what our plan is anymore, since it is a legal use. According to a lot of things, as long as it's private campground. And that's what I did in Harrison. And so that's where I leave it. All the bad points that there are already, we do not know what's next. And we will be coming back to this over and over again if we open the Pandora's box of saying. Recreational marijuana is legal in Wells. And as many of you know, I feel this is bejubu all over again, as Yogi Berra would say. The bottom line is, we were here in twenty seventeen and the town of Wells made a distinction between recreational and medicinal. And I see no reason and no, I mean, even the applicants could not prove that there was a dire need to have a marijuana drop close by. Because there are plenty in the surrounding area and it certainly would do a lot of damage to the family friendly character of Wells. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, my name is Steve Kattaher. I was a, I am a member of the planning board and as Nancy said, we voted five-nothing to deny this ordinance change. I wanted to expand on some of the points that Nancy made. You know, one of them, first is the comprehensive plan. Uh, if you look at the comprehensive plan, there's usually a mission statement at the beginning. Now, the latest comprehensive plan hasn't come out, we're working off of two thousand and five. And there were words in there to the effect that they want to enhance or promote the existing character of Wells. By changing the, the, uh, medical use to recreational use, that's not enhancing the family-friendly character of Wells. Um, a couple other things that Nancy pointed out is that, yes, marijuana is illegal federally. And I'm not sure how many people are aware, because there are not a lot of commercial driver's licenses in Maine. But if you hold a commercial driver's license, you're forbidden from, uh, partaking in marijuana. In fact, we have to submit our drivers routinely for drug tests. If a person comes back from a drug test and has failed it for marijuana use, then we have two options. We can either fire them or put them in counseling and train them not to use marijuana before they can come back to work. They're all on track. Um, and that means that their driver's license completely, CBL, is gone. Um, so that's one of the things to be concerned with. Now, how, how serious is that? Well, uh, there was a study done that, um, secondhand marijuana smoke can affect the drug test of someone with a CEO. If you're close enough, say for example, um, you rode on a bus to work and someone was smoking marijuana on that bus. And you get to work and the, the boss comes in and says, "It's your turn, you have to go for a drug test." Um, that person could test possible for marijuana use. He denied their driver's license because someone on that bus smoked marijuana. So the, the, the problems are real with, with marijuana use. Another issue that the board looked at was the possibility of children, uh, partaking of marijuana. And the, uh, increased availability of it would enhance that. I mean, you know, everyone says, oh, look, you know, litter, that's twenty-one and older. Get how many kids drink? I mean, it's something that you can't prevent from happening. You can try the best that you can, but you can't prevent it from happening. We don't need any further distractions from our children. Um, there's a study that came out this week that said, and this was on, um, I believe it was Channel Eight, that said that Maine students, high school students across the state only were twenty-eight percent proficient in math, even twenty-eight proficient, percent proficient in reading. And that's not acceptable. We don't need any more distractions for, for the kids in school. And as Nancy pointed out, that there is a serious drug problem in Maine. And, you know, I don't think anyone goes out there and starts, you know, the first drug of choice is not cocaine or opioids. Usually the first drug of choice is marijuana, and then it progresses to something else. So if you take that first step out, gives you a chance of saving some people from abusing drugs, it's great. Uh, getting back to the, the comprehensive plan, um, I don't believe that there's any language in there. Uh, I was on the comprehensive plan committee for a short period of time, I served with Jim on there. And, uh, you know, there was no discussion that what we really need to enhance the performance of this town is to establish recreational marijuana. Uh, another fallacy is that, um, well, uh, if we go to recreational use, people will get a better product. Well, that's kind of a ridiculous statement, because the owners have the ability to offer a better product. It's like going to a butcher store and saying, you know, geez, I, you know, I wish I could give you a better hamburger, but I can't, you know, because of, you know, because of this. And I need to really get this license so that I can give you a better hamburger. That's not really the way it works. I mean, if you really want to serve a better product, less contamination, that's up to the store owner. So, you know, by, by saying that, oh, well, the state's gonna force me to do a better job. The state's gonna force me to be a better proprietor. That's, that's kind of a weak argument. Another study came out, um, I think this was back in February, it was reported by Fox News, uh, that excessive marijuana use can cause, um, decline in cognitive ability. And so then the question becomes, what is excessive marijuana use? So the doctor involved in this study said that using marijuana a thousand times or more. Just if you think about that, if you think about that, uh, that's, you know, uh, basically once a day for three years. And a lot of people ask, well, what's, what do you mean by cognitive ability? Okay, so say for example, you know, I said to Nancy, um, you know, can you go to the store and pick up these four items? Person would reduce cognitive ability, but by the time they got to the store, if they didn't write it down, would forget that. Um, it, it, it ruins your ability to, to make, um, um, educated decisions. It ruins your ability to think. And I don't think that's really what we want. If people need to get marijuana, right now, there's a law in the state that you can call up, you have a medical marijuana card, you can call up and get marijuana delivered to your house. So, you know, if, and, and if you, if you need to get it, so that way you're not driving to, you know, recreational place. You're driving to the place and then you're driving home. You know, well, you go out to get a pizza, okay? Or you go out to get, take up food. How many times have people gone to McDonald's and on the way home, they're like, yeah, I'll have a few fries while I'm on the way home. Well, is that gonna be the same thing with recreational marijuana? Medical marijuana is a little bit different story, because medical marijuana, there's a legitimate purpose for the medical marijuana. It's to relieve pain or whatever. So, you know, the, 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 the chances of someone using marijuana on their way home from the medical marijuana store is far less than if they're using recreational marijuana. I think that the, the issue of traffic is a, is a big one, because as Nancy mentioned, that Route One, and we just did this corridor study, but I don't think a lot of people realize, this latest corridor study, we're not increasing the width of the road or tra- for the particular traffic on Route One. Uh, what we're doing is increasing for sidewalks, bike lanes, and things of that nature and signaling. So we're, you know, if anything, the traffic may get worse, because some areas of the road are gonna narrow as you increase bike lanes and things like that. So we don't want to be attracting more traffic in the summertime for, as Nancy pointed out, you know, we're, we're the hole in the map that, that would become marijuana destination. And again, uh, you know, that wasn't what the comprehensive plan suggested or wanted. So I think the, uh, and Nancy pointed out, the state has failed to release the report on cannabis. And I think part of the problem is that, is that if, if there were good news in it, I think it would have been released. Uh, how many times if, you know, there's, there's bad news, you don't want to talk about it. But if there's good news, you're happy to tell everyone that there's good news. So again, I, I would strongly recommend, uh, to the board that they follow the lead of the planning board and reject this ordinance, reject it from, uh, from being sent again to the voters. I guess the thing that bothers me is the voters rejected this in two thousand and seventeen. They pushed for the, the, the medical marijuana. I mean, how many times do we have to keep going back and, and addressing this? I think, uh, you know, it's kind of like, uh, burnout. People get tired of saying, oh, I gotta vote again for, I gotta vote against this again, I gotta vote against this again. And, uh, I, I think that's a bad precedent to set. So as in conclusion, um, I would recommend that you would not place this on the ballot, that you rejected any ordinance change in, uh, um, in such time when the federal government allows it, then perhaps we can revisit this issue. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you. My name is Adam Platt. I'm the CFO and owner of Jar Cannabis. I'm a resident of Auburn, Maine. Uh, I want to thank the select board for hearing this. I want to thank everyone from the town who's here. People have spoken. I appreciate you guys' input and planning board as well. Um, a couple of things I just wanna, I will try to limit myself to three minutes, I know you guys have a long agenda tonight. Uh, but a couple of things I just want to go through is, is first the intent of this. I know there's, there's been a lot that's been brought up, so I'll try to go kind of through my bullet points, but. Our intent for introducing this ordinance amendment change is not, uh, to increase our business today, it's not to save ourselves today. As we spoke at the, uh, select board meeting previously, this is to us, it, it's a business decision, but it's one that won't affect us for years. Um, what we're seeing, and I want to tie this directly to one of the, the, the failure points from the planning board, but they're not doing a change in service. The reason that we're here today, we are an operator in the state of Maine. Uh, this woman does incredible research. Uh, I appreciate all the information that you uncovered. We do own other shops throughout the state. The majority of those shops are recreational adult-use stores. We also have medical stores as well. What we have been seeing over the last, uh, we've been operational since, with our recreational stores since twenty twenty-one, our med stores since two thousand and eighteen. We are a company that believes in regulation. We've always, we've been out in the news saying that. We believe in taxation. We believe in product testing. We believe in a regulated environment. We believe it's the only way that this industry will persist over time. It's my opinion that it should. It's others' opinion that it shouldn't. The state of Maine legalized this, um, and obviously there have been several votes in the town of Wells, obviously pushing this forward. It's been our experience with medical, that time and time again, going through the state legislature, we have not seen any ra- reasonable change for regulation on the medical side. We still operate in the medical market. We test our product. We provide product that is safe. It's the highest quality that we could, could possibly put out. But we aren't seeing a regulated industry where we have a well-defined taxation system on med. The taxes are going up and down, there, there are bills in the state right now that might up, uh, raise it, lower it. There's excise tax that does not exist that may come into play. There's just lots of financial uncertainties. We also do not have the support of the Office of Canvas Policy, the same way we do on the adult-use side. If you're a player in the adult-use side, you get to work with a regulatory agency that comes into your facility multiple times a year. If you have personnel issues, you get to reach out to the Office of Cannabis Policy. You have higher camera angle standards that you must enact, and they must check annually. You get help from these agencies when there are inventory issues, when you have customers who should not be in your store. Um, OCP will still help medical stores, but medical is not a part of that master regulatory plan. So from our perspective, we've seen a medical market that is shrinking. A medical market that is becoming, um, I, I don't know how you want to say it, but I just see it becoming less regulated. And the writing is on the wall that the future is in a regulated market. And so what we are asking from the select board is to push this through to the people to vote with the, with the people, like three medical stores that already exist, where they already exist. We're not proposing a change in the cap. We're not proposing a change in location. And ask me if they would like a more regulated form of that product sold in their town. Now, to address some of the, some of the issues, um, that have been brought up at a planning board, they're unanimous vote. Uh, I think the first one was increased usage and increased traffic. It's a tough thing to, to, to prove. There are no anecdotes on, of a side-by-side medical and adult-use store in Wells. Um, I appreciate the sentiment that it would increase traffic. The only anecdote I can give is that we have a medical store next to an adult-use store on Route three oh two in Windham, Maine. It's a heavily traveled, traveled path. Uh, our adult-use store is in fact busier by fifteen to twenty percent. We service ten to fifteen, ten to twelve cars an hour. So we're talking about an increase between ten to twelve cars an hour and fourteen, fifteen, sixteen cars an hour. So I'll admit, right in front, on record, there will be an increase in traffic. My question is to the select board, is an increase in traffic of that magnitude, is that consistent with other hearings that have been held for ordinance changes? Have, have, have there ever been dings on the application for an increase in two, three, four, five cars an hour? If the answer is yes, I, that's great. If not, um, I'd just be asked that we be treated the, the same in that sense. Um, with regard to comments with the comp plan as well as federal legality, it is federally illegal. I think we all know that. I can't stand up here and say that it isn't. Um, Wells has clearly made a decision, as have many other towns and cities in the state of Maine, that they will allow federally illegal substance to be sold in the form of medical cannabis. You, you guys have already crossed that bridge, and that's, that's great. That was your choice. I'm not sure that allowing adult-use recreational changes that in any way. I think that bridge has already been crossed, but I, I could be wrong. And with regard to the comp plan, I just bring up, but again, I'm no expert in your comp plan. All I can say is that the outside environment has changed. The state of Maine has passed statute that is different than it was in two thousand and five. And you guys have also voted on ordinance changes that are different, you know, when that comp plan was passed in two thousand and five. I, I think, I mean, I've made the, I've made the business argument of, of why we think this needs to occur, and it's, it's not, it's not for our safety today. It's for, it's for, it is for the safety of our business down the road, but it's also, we think, for the safety of customers. I know there's, there seems to be doubt and opinion that medical product can be as safe as adult-use product, and again, I think we, we brought up the use of that conditional word may, you know, maybe, and I'd say in my experience, sure, medical may be as safe as adult-use, but I am a cannabis user and, and I'm not buying medical products. I mean, it, it could have pesticides on it. It could, it's untested. It could be tested, but you'd never know. You don't have to put that on there as a medical operator. Nobody does. Um, there are significant patient concerns and customer concerns with medical product. Um, we, we're able to cite all sorts of things that are going on at Augusta. Everything you guys cited is true. There was a, a report that was withheld by Director, uh, Udak of Office Cannabis Policy. Who knows why he did that? I don't know. Is it because there's poor outcomes? Maybe. Could it be because there's damning evidence against him? Who knows? It's speculation. I, I don't want to use that as a reason to, to, to hold this up, but I will say, there are also reports from the Office of Cannabis Policy stating that, you know, fifty percent of all, uh, shelf-tested products off of medical stores are, are testing positive for things that you do not want on there. And so until we have some, some agency that's telling every customer what they should and shouldn't buy, that's where we're coming from. We built our entire reputation on quality, consistent product. Listen, if you don't like cannabis, probably don't want to hear what I'm saying, but if you believe that things that are legal by statute in the state of Maine have an opportunity to be heard by the people, that's where we're coming from. We've built our entire reputation on a quality company that believes in safe customers, you know, safe customer products, great customer interaction. Whether you guys, um, send this to the public to go, we will be a great operator in the town of Wells. As a medic, and I said it about the other two operators, you guys have three very good medical operators, but things can change. If those companies don't remain strong, they could transfer their licenses, they could sell their licenses, new people could come in. There's no way to regulate what a bad medical player will do. And so that's the crux of why we're here. I, I have a lot written down. I don't want to get into too many details. I would, I would really urge the select board to be pragmatic about a lot of these negatives that, sorry, I apologize, I don't mean to point, um, a lot of the negatives that have been brought up about this industry, they're valid opinions. Uh, this is a divisive issue. We have been through this in other towns. We have succeeded, we've failed. This is a divisive issue. I, I appreciate everyone's opinion. However this plays out, we take no offense from them. We will be here. We will be a good operator in this town. But I, I strongly would urge the select board to acknowledge that the sky has not fallen in other communities. Other communities have dealt with this question before. The sky has not fallen. Um, towns have found responsible ways. I think it's through capping and setbacks. You guys have chose capping. I believe there are very responsible ways to control the prevalence of this industry within one's, uh, town limits. I think you guys have done that with the recap. What we are asking the select board, put this to the people to see how they can vote. Um, they've done, and I get, I get they voted on it before, but that was seven years ago, and a lot has changed in seven years. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions. We try to be as transparent as possible here. Um, yeah, that, that's pretty much all I have to say. I want to, again, thank everyone for allowing us to be part of this process. This is an important, beautiful process. Um, win or lose, we, we appreciate the opportunity. So thank you.
See, if anybody else hasn't spoken, has an opportunity? Yes, sir?
Yes, for questions. I just had a fun-
We'll, we'll just get through the room then.
Okay, fine.
Anthony, our twelve-year resident, Wells, Maine, and twelve-year resident of Maine. To say, start by saying that the previous speaker, to me, the previous speaker makes a very strong case for medical marijuana being distributed in our pharmacies the same way all the other medical drugs are distributed and regulated and quality assured and everything else. And, uh, but that's just my comment on, on, on the previous speaker. Uh, I was, uh, uh, I think that Nancy and Steve have, have very both eloquently and comprehensively spoken to, to all the issues. I just wanted to raise two, I, I would call them process issues unrelated to the actual stuff. The one is, um, the election, the election in twenty seventeen, uh, the, uh, we, we here in Wells, we're asked a lot of questions. Voters in Wells were asked a lot of questions. I, I, um, I, I, um, volunteer at polls and help with the elections, that sort of thing. There's an enormous number of questions we face every single time there's a town election. And when I look at it and I, I complain about it a lot and it's, it's, it's not something, I'm not a believer that, that, I'm not a believer in state representatives. I think that we elect representative governments, that the representatives are supposed to do all of that work. But, but setting that aside and accepting the fact that that's the reality, that we, we ask voters have to answer a lot of questions. I appreciate you say it's in seven years since we made that vote. But we, we answer, what is it like, like, um, something like twenty questions at least, uh, every time, every, every year. And we have to go and we have to thing, we have to vote. It takes us-
Sir, please address the chair.
And the, uh, the thing is that when I look at those questions, the reason we have to answer those questions is because things have truly changed since when the select board asked us questions the year before. I mean, it's, 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 it's truly because there is a change. And where, when I look at the question, we went, we went through a lot of trouble in twenty seventeen. And it was, it was a, it was a, uh, uh, highly involved election. I mean, it was, it was a lot of participation. There was a lot of campaigning. And, uh, I would, I would assert that seven years isn't very long. So for a decision like that, we don't need to be asked that question over and over again. I think we could, no, nothing has changed that would really, force us to go through that whole deliberation all over again. Uh, there was a major change in twenty sixteen and that's why we went through it in twenty seventeen. And to be, to come up with reasons to go over it and over it again, that's why I, I appreciate not sending this to the voters and, uh, and leaving things as, as we, as we left them after, after the twenty seventeen vote. The second part, the second thing I just want to comment on process was that in all my experiences here in, in Wells, it's, it's been a wonderful experience here in Wells. But it was, the experience of that campaign was, was, um, for me, one of the, one of the great experiences in, in self-government and participation in, in community politics and, and community decision-making. Because in that, like, you know, we, we live in highly, highly partisan times and, and especially in national politics and everything else. But this question, it was fascinating to me. We, uh, uh, the, the, the main focus of the campaign for, for us when, when we were, um, when I worked with Nancy and we, we campaigned on this was, uh, Saturday mornings at the, at the, um, uh, transfer facility at the dump. And on Saturday mornings, we went and, and we just talked to people and there were people, uh, which, which is done for a lot of elections and, and, and I, I, it's a place where you really get to actually interact with the voters and it seemed to me at the time, it was fascinating to me that there were three, there were three, three groups of people in, um, in, in Wells. There were the people that, that, that wanted the, uh, that wanted to have, uh, the marijuana as, as free and open as, uh, it could be. There were those that were, uh, very opposed to it. And then there was, there were the people that didn't really care and one way or the other, it didn't matter. The beauty of having the, and, and actually in the interaction, I, you, you got to find out a lot more about what people bought than you do in, uh, in, in sort of the national politics and the sort of thing, because you actually talked about the real issues. Why, and I, and I appreciate the people who want it. It made sense that they, that they wanted it. And the people that didn't care, it made sense that they didn't care. And the people, and I already knew about the people that, that didn't want it and why we didn't want it. But, um, the thing is that, uh, we, 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 we operate as a, as a community in this best way. And I think that when we go through that and we do that, that we, we came to a consensus. And that it really is a good thing that the way it got decided was the people that, the people who really wanted it voted for it. The people that really didn't want it voted, voted, you know, each voted in their own way. And all the people in the middle that, that, that didn't care, didn't bother to vote. I mean, they, it, it, their, their voice wasn't help, help. But I think a lot of these campaigns of attrition over time, just repeating the vote, repeating the vote, repeating the vote, you're waiting for that mill that doesn't really care to swing your way and find some way to make that happen. And that's why I, 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 I really wanted to speak to them. I, I think that it's, it's a settled issue in this town and until there is some kind of external change like there was in twenty sixteen, it's, it's, it's nothing we need to, to spend our time and energy on. Despite all these arguments and get into things like traffic and whatever else. Like I said, it seems to me, listening now, why don't they, why don't they distribute medical marijuana at the pharmacies? You know, that would solve almost all the problems I've heard about, uh, uh, today. Thank you.
One second, Steve. So anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak, would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Jaylon Burden. I've lived here twenty-something years and I am not in favor of changing this amendment. I was involved in the campaign in two thousand and seventeen. I think it's using the word medical, when you're like, why doesn't your industry demand that?
Ma'am, please address the, the board.
So, you know, that's kind of like built into my mind that it kind of captured that medical thing and it's a slippery slope and now it's recreational and, you know, um, we voted as a town to not allow that in a recreational. You see the result as you drive through other towns in Maine, I'm thinking of two thirty-six, Kidney, South Berwick. I mean, it's just littered with marijuana leaves, green flags, cross flags. Um, we didn't want that in this town. And I don't think we still, we do now. And if their industry isn't accommodating through medical and they all want to go recreational, that's not our problem, you know? We didn't want it. There's plenty, as Nancy said, towns surrounding us that went that route. And I don't think it's, you can get it delivered to your door. I mean, what do we need it for? We didn't want it. So I'm very much opposed to allowing that in Wells. Why can't we be different? We are family-friendly, friendly. Um, it's refreshing to go to a place and see it different than other towns and not be like every other town offering marijuana here and there. And then you go to a town that's like, wow, it's just kind of, you know, why, why does every town need to do that? Is there that much of a market? And, you know, it's interesting, I, to get back to that medical, I don't know, I don't know much about it. I don't use it and stuff and that's fine. People do use it medically and it helps them. But you used to be able to get a medical card. From what I understand, you had to get one through a doctor. And I'm driving by seeing signs, come in and get your free medical marijuana card. And I'm like, wow, I, they, that's a slippery slope there. They changed that, you know, so. I mean, we isn't going to go and we want our town to be identified as, uh, I like Wells, raising my kids here. I've got grandkids coming. It's, you know, it's different. You just have one town, let them go the border to another town. Thank you.
Anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak, would like to speak on this topic before I open it back up to previous speakers? And when the question, please address the questions to the board if the, uh, individual opposed the question wants to answer, we can after.
So just a, 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 a math point here. Um, we heard, talked about the, um, two stores side by side. One had fifteen, sixteen customers an hour. The other has twelve to thirteen. And it was the, uh, the, uh, those of the, uh, medical that was, that was less removed. So if we, if the ordinance were to change, you'd wind up with one store that can service both medical and, and, and radio. So you'd be doubling the, the traffic.
No, I, I disagree. I think it has to be one or the other. The ordinance would say one or the other. You could either be medical.
Right.
You could be male or-
Right, but you don't understand what I'm saying. I'm saying, okay, all those people that have medical marijuana card, if it's just recreational, they can go and they can put that medical card in their wallet, go into the recreational store by what they need. So basically what you're doing is you've doubled the traffic. He's saying, yeah, the two stores side by side. So basically what I'm saying is what you've done is you've doubled the traffic per hour. And, and that's what we're saying. That's what we're trying to prevent is that much increased traffic under this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please just address the board.
It's gonna go there, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, no. Please come to the podium.
House Speaker's going.
And after, after this round, if there's nobody else, I think we'll take a motion.
My question had to do with the relevance of comparing traffic patterns in Wyndham to traffic patterns in Wells. I don't know who has been, who drove down Main Route one in Wells in the summertime and said that we're not going to have an increase in traffic. We have an increase in traffic no matter what we do here. It is outrageous. Like I said, it would be easier for me to drive to one of the other towns around here to get my marijuana. I would not bother to come down to Route one in Wells. It is absolutely the worst curve that'll put any store on that is going to have an additional amount of traffic through there. So I just don't understand comparing traffic patterns in Wyndham to traffic patterns in Wells. I think that would need a traffic study to determine which was correct.
Thank you. Were anybody that hasn't spoken, like a chance to speak before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Sir?
My name is Jack Forrest and, uh, obviously related to Nancy. As a resident of, of Wells for over twenty-five years. Prior to coming up to Wells, I spent forty years in a classroom as a teacher. And my great concern about all of this, uh, right now is what is this increased amount of marijuana going to do potentially to our children? And, uh, I, I, it, it is my greatest concern. There are other valid concerns that were uh, very well dis- uh, discussed and expressed that I, but I'm focusing on the potential danger that this change will have to our young kids here at Wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, John Wilberich. Um, I'll go as quickly as possible. So I first started, uh, smoking marijuana in two thousand and nine and the last time I smoked marijuana was in two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'll try and connect all these topics. So in twenty seventeen, it had been several years since the last time I consumed marijuana. I had a seizure while I was driving the car that I was driving my, uh, partner at the time in the vehicle. And later that day I found out that I was diagnosed with a brain tumor. I had surgery later, um, that same summer. And the recovery for that, um, was, uh, afterward and the treatment was to prevent the, uh, possibility of having other seizure events, which would of course make it, uh, impossible for me to drive and, uh, less likely that I could still conduct, uh, professional capabilities in life, you know, have a job, uh, be a benefit to society, et cetera. Um, the research that has been conducted probably in some of these categories, whether you're talking about tobacco, alcohol, um, and other substances that have been scientifically proven over decades worth of studies, um, similar to the type of research that I was a participant in at the National Institute of Health for the type of brain cancer that I had. So all I want to say about this topic is there has been a substantial amount of research about cannabis and its effect on individuals and whether it renders them being capable of participating in society the same way that any other person may, uh, wish to do so. The research about whether it's addictions or other health, uh, concerns and damages that things like tobacco, alcohol and other legal products to the general public, that research has, uh, been shown and the amazing thing about the history of those industries is the amount of money that has gone into the research and the, um, conversation that is put not just in the news, but in front of politicians and people that, uh, make laws on those topics, whether or not it is safe to, uh, sell tobacco or alcohol legally. And I remember the prohibition years, um, as I researched that history in school. And the difference with marijuana that is happening now is very similar to those types of things that have happened in the past where it's a new topic and a lot of people really want more research to know what are the effects of it? Is it going to lead to, um, a completely different experience in society if it becomes legal, if it becomes normalized? The history of marijuana also, whether it becomes legal, uh, not just for medical purposes, but for recreational purposes also, trusting where your source is coming from, if you don't have legal options of finding it, going out because whether it's an addiction or just because you really want to participate in something, peer pressure, et cetera. Um, having safe options of reaching out to it, in my opinion, is better than not having safe options, uh, whether it is for medical purposes or recreational purposes. Um, I hope that all information that has been taken throughout, uh, the country in many places, uh, takes into consideration the facts and what the studies show about the amount of damage that specifically cannabis, uh, has had in populations and maybe compare that to other substances that have been legalized for quite a long time, much longer. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoken, like a chance to speak before I take my motion? Seeing none, we give motion to close the public hearing and make the discussion?
Yeah, I make a motion to make close the public hearing and go into discussion.
All those in favor? Uh, it was a number of zero.
I'll start. I'll start. Um, I recall, like, you know, when, um, we passed it in twenty seventeen or whatever. At the time, um, no, you know, everyone was very concerned about, oh my gosh, you know, we, you know, how are we going to handle this? How, where, what are we going to do? Because it's now, it's been accepted by the state and it's going to be coming down to be put into your own towns one at a time or whatever they're going to do. So at the time, even when we were looking at it, we decided that, um, that, and, and we put it up to the people um, that, uh, will, you can, you were allowed one medical at that time, I think, one medical, um, place or eliminated of one in your town and, um, and you could open that up for legally. That was at first. That wasn't before recreational. And, um, and so we looked at that and, and we said, you know, you can, and then very quickly it went to have more that you could put in there if you wanted to. It just kept, it was accelerating at a much quicker um, pace than we were able to keep up in this town. So we allowed one, the people voted to, to go with, not with recreational and to go with the medical because that, there were a lot of, there were a lot of support for that because there are a lot of people, that medical marijuana is, has been used actually in hospitals long before it was legal. They called it another name, but you know, when people got sick and they couldn't eat, that's what you ingested so that you could have an appetite and you wouldn't be, have, be nauseous. So, um, so I mean, the medical part was understandable. It really helped a lot of people and that seemed acceptable here that we could, we could do that. So we, we put the medical in. The recreational we didn't do, and I'm glad we held off on that because if you drive down two thirty-six, if you drive down any of those places, if you go Wyndham, um, and you, and you see all the places on every street corner, there's a flag that was, that's waving in the air or something that, that says is- there's a flag that was, that's waving in the air or something that, that says it's a medical, um, it's a, a recreational um, use for that. And I, and we didn't want that in that town. We didn't want it on, on our streets and, and every time you get onto a street corner, that would be. The townspeople voted that way. They voted that way once for the single one and then they voted again when, when they said they opened it up, you could have as many as you wanted. And we weren't prepared for some of that. Um, and we didn't, and they voted to retroactively at that time, which was a um, it's really a harsh form of government, but you can vote to go retroactive so that any permits that came in while we were working our way through how we wanted to put the adju- adornment um, in ordinances and what kind of restrictions we wanted, whether we wanna see from those um, buildings and, and how we wanted to do it and how many did we really want. People voted for that. They voted to retroactively not allow anymore until we addressed what we needed to do for any other permits. And then um, we voted for three. Three, that's what we voted, three, medical, not recreational, three, medical. And um, and so right now, and that prevented, you know, we don't have all the, the traffic and the stores with all the flags and that you see in all those other towns. And right now, that, within five minute drive, you can go to any recreational place, South Borough, Haslam, North Borough, whatever, they all do. So it's not like there's a driving need here for us to provide that to the, to the town. And the three medical that we have there, the permit, that's what the people wanted. If you vote, if we move forward and we vote to change, one of them, they're allowed now to go to a recreational. And it is because it's gonna be um, more, there's gonna be more customers, there's gonna be more because it goes out to a broader um, type of people, not just limited to medical use, but limited to recreational. So it is gonna be more people. It is a bit of, and a more expensive business. And if you're a business person, that's what you're looking for anyway. But if we allow that once, it's, it, why would not the other ones do the same thing? And, and, and we would have a, already a, 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 in, in place a precedence for having done that. So we would then go from the medical to the, from the medical to the recreation. For the same reason, there's this town ordinance going to, they can come forward and say the same thing and do the very same thing and we wouldn't be able to stop it. I'm saying that allowing this to go, it's a domino effect. And then we wouldn't have, then, then we wouldn't have medical. We wouldn't have any medical. People that really needed it and wanted to use it for medical would have to drive that five miles or ten miles to the next one. So I'm just saying it's a very um, dangerous precedence to allow this to go forward. And the planning board did their due diligence and looked at the six categories that would allow an individual to be able to change the zoning. Um, particularly, that's a process that an individual has. And if any one of those fail, then that when, it shouldn't be moved forward and it, because you, you know, there, it, it's not, it's not um, proven to be a need in the, in the town or um, in, in need in the town. And they found three. I'm like, well, I can't ask you that. But um, they found more than one. And they moved it to us. And so we looked at it and we said, yeah, well, you know, maybe we really, let's have a public hearing and see what the people think. Well, I'm, I'm hearing that the people here aren't happy with it, but I'm sure there are people that are for it somewhere that didn't come tonight. I mean, that just happens. Um, but I'm just saying, you, you let this go once, you change that for that reason, which is really to have a better business, uh, no matter how you look at it, to a business that's not currently allowed. The other two will follow and it will turn around to bite us. You know, in the end, we will be, and then, once you have three, why wouldn't you have more? You know, you've already allowed the restrictions that you put in place. That's what I fear. I agree with you. I, I don't wanna see that in our town. And I don't agree there's a need for it. I agree that people can go anyplace and find it. And that's how I feel.
I feel like the town has been very judicious about dealing with this issue over time. And it's been done steps. And it has been eight years since the people of this town have the opportunity to weigh in on how they feel about this. This is not government. This is the people's government. And I feel like we, they deserve the opportunity to weigh in up or down how they feel about this issue. So, I, I would be in favor of forwarding this to the voters to see what their pleasure is regarding this issue.
I agree, Scott. Central issue is whether or not we advance it to the, the, the real decision makers, the matters of people for the residents. And that, I think, is what we're here really to litigate. It's not about whether or not we like marijuana or have a high opinion of it. I think some of the stuff that is presented is factual, some is subjective in nature to get that in any, any argument, but I mean, that's, that's my inclination as well, Scott, is that let the people have a voice on it. And, you know, maybe, maybe people change their mind. Maybe they'd like another bite of the apple. If they don't, they'll shoot it down. And if they want it, then they'll vote for it.
Can, can I address?
Oh, it's pretty special, Tom.
Okay. Uh, I, I agree that, you know, the people ultimately vote, but they elect us to do the due diligence, look at what people would want and to put out something that we really looked at carefully. And it wasn't just once that we voted on that. We voted the first time and then we voted the retroactive to hold it back. And then we revoted to um, to hold it to only three. So over the years, it's been more than one vote. It's not, and, and every time, it's been consistent. So it's like, how many, and I agree with the gentleman said, how many times do we have to just say, you know, you know, do you really mean it? Do you really, really mean it this time? Maybe the first time you didn't mean it and the second time you didn't mean it. Maybe the fourth time you'll, you'll, you wanna change your mind. I'm saying that those people elected us to sit in these seats, look at what's been happening, what, what's gotten, we look at the broad picture. Do you, I mean, seriously, they vote, they know how we're gonna vote probably when they put, when they elect us and put us here. But they, but you look at, at the Route One and how you want it, is that the vision you want for your, for your town? Regardless of the exposure or whether, you know, you believe for a medical, I believe in medical marijuana. And, and I, you know, it, it really helps people, but um, but I, I just think that, do we really want that kind of an atmosphere? I think it doesn't couple with what the people have voted and I don't think it couples with what we hear when people want this to be a nice homey town and friendly and family-friendly, uh, family-friendly.
I also agree that uh, we should, we should put this item before the people and let the people decide. But the most compelling argument that I heard tonight uh, from the public is the element of, of having the element of safety and not having a product being sold you know, from somebody's garage or parking lot or that sort of thing. And I heard um, the existing one of the positions that the operators want the regulation. And they have the increased regulation, I think, to, to, to keep it safe to those who want it. It's the most compelling argument I've heard.
Hey, Tom Scott?
Yeah, um, Tom, um, I'm struggling. I, I'll be perfectly honest. I can't even get thinking. I just put it to the voters and I hear what your people are saying and I think you present a good case too. I mean, both sides present such a, an interesting idea. I throw out the traffic piece because we're gonna approve a Starbucks, we're gonna approve all this stuff on Route One anyway. And we're gonna make Route One smaller. I just, the, the traffic part is, and Wyndham has terrible traffic. I've driven that stretch of Wyndham before, so they actually have worse traffic than we do. But um, the I, the idea of, I, I'm just a really strong believer in letting people make a decision. I think the citizens, and I know they've made it before, but times have changed. Things have changed. I, I, and, you know, we put up a good case of making it more safe. If we can make this part more safe. I don't like it on Route One. I don't, I don't. And that's what been my struggle. I, I wish it was somewhere else, but that's where our business district is and that's where they put it, not, you know, but I, I'll probably vote to put it to the voters. Let them come out and say no. If that's what you don't want, come out and say no and then do it.
I, I just wanted to clear something that you said you're allowing.
It's a, it's a public comment.
Right, but this, this has to do with, with um, the, the voting that was talked about.
Well, we, we, we close the public comment period at this point. So procedurally, if you wanna speak during the open of the public, then invite you through that.
Well, can we just, if I said something wrong, I'd rather not.
Well, would the board have problems, Steve contributing? No, let's hear it.
So, the, the, the only thing that I, that I wanted to say is, um, you were talking about the issue of the voters decide. Well, the last ordinance change that we had, we actually had four the medical marijuana places that the, that the planning board had approved. But the retroactive removed that fourth one from viability. So, so the people have already voted and said no more. So i- i- and this happened just recently. This was what, a year ago?
Yes, right, but that was policy that was, that was ultimately, I mean, you guys viewed, but we worked. I remember working very diligently on that policy and we advanced, we advanced that to the voters. The voters had a say on whether or not they wanted to limit it to four or if they wanted to have it just expanded all over town.
Well, it's limited to three.
Yeah, very sorry. Yeah.
In either, either case, that's not going to change, whether the recreational or medical, if it gets recreational at best, there still would be three, limited to three points out.
Oh, oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
That, no, there was three medical that we allowed.
No, it's still a change. There's three recreational.
Oh, three recreational.
Yeah.
They said it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Or, or.
And we will never advocate for an increased cap. I mean, sorry to speak out, but I know that's important.
It's either two or one, like.
Our cap will stay in play here. Ours, widespread propagation, up and down, like we've seen in other communities where it's just gone all the way up through. You have a monoculture of businesses. I don't think that's a concern unless a subsequent board down the road decides that they wanna try to remove that or however, you can, you're aware of what's gonna happen, but I think that's, that's how democracy works.
Yeah.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion uh, that we uh, move this call to the, to the analysis.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a, we have a motion to advance to the voters. We have a second. All in favor? Four, all opposed. One. All righty. Thank you, everybody. All right. Moving on, we have Sean Brown's Clam Shanty LLC, DBA Brown's Clam Shanty, one ninety, Post Road Wells application for a full-time beer and wine liquor license. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Next, we have Pat Mavati LLC, DBA Bailey Restaurant Pub, sixteen nineteen Post Road Wells, application for a full-time beer, wine and spirits liquor license. Anybody from the public like to speak on that? Seeing none?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Next, we have uh, Pat Mavati LLC, DBA Bailey Restaurant Pub, sixteen nineteen Post Road Wells, application for a special entertainment permit. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Moving on, we have good news. Does anybody have some good news they'd like to share?
Mine would be, I agree.
All right. We'll afford that. All right, seeing none on good news. We're gonna move over to open the public for the first time this evening. We have ten minutes set aside for general questions, comments, concerns. We ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and try to keep it to three minutes so everybody has a chance to speak.
My comment is that having worked on a tremendous number of referendums that was supposedly the people's choice, that by the time the big money comes in and starts advocating on one side or the other, the next thing you know, people are voting to things they don't even know what they're voting for. We did a lot of work in twenty seventeen to educate the voters as to the outcome of their vote on, and when this goes to the polls again, we're going to have to do the same. Because believing the big marijuana money will be in here advocating to pass this ordinance, you are turning it over with the decision to be made by the corporate industry behind marijuana. As opposed to taking the recommendation of your own planning board that voted unanimously, unanimously not to send it to the public. And that certainly will be made clear to the public as well. That you have voted against your own planning board. Now, how many other times would you take that act? How many terms have you voted against the majority rule of your planning board? I would like to know that. And maybe we'll find that out in the future. But in the meantime, you have opened Pandora's box and you will have to live with the consequences. And your children and your grandchildren, we are the elderly. It is not gonna affect us, but it will affect the children in this town. And my grandchildren are already grown. And they don't even live in this town. But I'm saying, you have opened the Pandora box because don't say they can't ask for more. They can ask for the campground. They can ask for the social club if that's been approved. Once you allow recreational marijuana in your town, you have done your duty in turning it over to the marijuana industry. And good luck.
Anybody else like to speak at this time? Yes, sir.
Uh, Don Campbell. Uh, I got a problem caused by blocked drain across the street from the town hall. And uh, it can be Nazis and runway twenty-five on Hampton Road. Uh, it's usually blockage. Water comes out one oh nine in the elementary school. Goes to this drain, which is blocked. So it, it backs up under my property. Uh, my, the flood, my back, backyard is flooded. About a foot of water. And uh, my grandchildren, my dog, they, they have no place to play. But this was nice when they were it was cold, they had a nice ice party. And now, right. Uh, this water, they had it in my basement with the salt pump running about every two minutes. And uh, when that flowed, you know, by the street. And I had to get my generator out. Took about a half an hour. During that time, I had an inch of water on the floor. So at that rate, like two inches an hour would come in to that salt pump stop. So in eight hours, I had sixteen inches of water. And I had the flooded water machine dryer, furnace, water tank and the freezer. Now, it'll be damaged through this water. This salt pump quits. And uh, this is the second time that this is flooded. Years ago, I never had this problem. So I, I kinda wondered, why am I getting this problem? So last fall, I spent about an hour, went out there by the culvert and cut the bushes and trims because it was all buried underneath. And I looked in there and I could, there's like a twelve inch pipe that crosses one oh nine, goes over towards the new school sign. I looked in there, as far as I could see, it was all clear. And uh, I don't know whether, whether the uh, drain is supposed to go, it's supposed to go down one oh nine, dump into Depot Brook? Or if it uh, used to dump into the property between Myers and the entrance to the town hall? I noticed that uh, when they put that new sign up, I think it's a possibility that, that they might have, they might have uh, plugged it up, stopped that water going. Now, I don't know if, I uh, I emailed Steve January Sucker and he went on, said he looked at it, he's gonna get to it as soon as he can. But it's been two and a half months. And I don't know, something's gonna have to be done. I don't think it's right for the town to dump water on my property. And uh, there's something to be done about this. I appreciate it. I don't know, it's steep. It's gonna be my fault.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, so I um, I actually went out there again this morning uh, to look at that. Um, so my understanding of the history of that is it's only been the last couple of years that it's, we've had the issue. Um, so I did have that budget for next year, uh, but obviously the issue is there now. So I will be going out with uh, my crew to take a look at that. Uh, and see if we can at least alleviate the issue that is there right now. Um, it is essentially backed up. Uh, I'm not sure if it's a failed cover, but it's just that the end is blocked. Um, but it is, it's definitely an issue and I uh, will be taking a look at that.
Do you know where the drain went originally?
Um, I believe it goes uh, around towards the high school, uh, and then kind of eventually crosses Route One coming down. Um, but I've been trying to find some original plans of what the intent was for that and have been able to find exactly where this would not need to do something different with the drainage there. But you wanna let you know that we are, we are looking to address that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public like to speak? Or anybody else from the public like to speak? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to current agenda items. We have review and action on accounts payable and paywall warrants. Any discussion on that?
Um. I do have some discussion regarding the general assistance. Portion, and not this, this specific warrant, but I do want to bring up the subject. And I appreciate you bringing the subject up last evening. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the meeting. We got caught a little behind, um. And I really wish I would have been there last night, because there was some information behind the proposal that I was trying to forward. Uh, that I, I would have liked to have given, but I'm going to do it right now, if you'll allow. Uh. The proposal last night was to expose. A portion of the undesigned fund to a match to the We Are Wells Fund to encourage donations to that fund, but I didn't get to, to give you the reason behind it. Uh, this came about, about a month ago, our general assistance coordinator, Laurie Lord, came to the, the road ring meeting, and she's excellent, by the way, I was very, very impressed with her.
She is.
Um. She expressed some concern at that time, and as we know, the federal government is, is, you know. Cutting the budget, and one of those things is, uh, is medicated. Now, apparently, the general assistance of the town diviso. Matriculates its way down from the federal government, through the state government, to the towns. To assess people with their needs. And she was very concerned that, you know, it appears that that has been taken out, and she's not going to have access to those funds to help people. My other concern is. Our shipyard may be subject to cost-cutting measures as well, it's the largest employer in the town. And we could have people that are out of work through no fault of their own, that aren't going to have access to assistance if they should need it. And if it's not coming from the federal government, and it's not from the state government. There's no funds for us to address the, those, the needs of those folks. So. What I'm hoping we can do is. Put this proposal forward. I did have a conversation with the chair of the budget committee this afternoon. He said that he feels that the, uh, you know, after hearing this, that his committee would be certainly willing to come back out and, and need to reconcile the proposal. Um, I, I just think it's better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. If, uh, if there's need for, for business assistance going forward. Now, We Are Wells Fund, I, I. Proposed this one in particular, because it takes care of the needs of the people of the town of Wells. It's not for the person that shows up on our doorstep and says, I need a place to stay in a hotel room, and they're coming from someplace away. These are the people that live and work in this town. And, uh, I just feel that. If there's a need for assistance, we should have some type of channel to, uh, to be able to provide that when necessary.
I, I think that's, um. That, that's something to, that we can look at, but I don't think it's something that we can throw into a budget. Without, uh, you know, without a little more feedback or understanding or, uh, process or setup of how it's gonna happen, because. Um, if you, if you watched it last night, there were some concerns about, um, what that would mean, um, if the government, because we'd be. And, and we'd have to vote in people, the people's money to do that. It's not like our money and not, you know, and, and, you know, that even the undesigned funds came from taxpayers. Um, originally, so I think it's good, and I think it's a great idea, Scott, and I think we can move it forward, but I, I think at this point, where we have such a short amount of time. Uh, I don't know, I know, maybe, you know, maybe there was a way to do it, but I.
My, my thought would be, I, I love the idea, I think it's very. Forward-thinking. I'd love to get an auditor's take on if we are. Perception would be co-mingling potentially taxpayer dollars with monies that are donated toward We Are Wells. That may be perfectly fine, but I'd love to hear from our auditor, make sure procedurally that we're okay to do that, and then. How those funds can then be released by the board, uh, back for the cause. Now, if you can give us a little time on that, absolutely, we'll follow up. Jody and I will work on that.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay, we will.
Okay, we're ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve and sign a warrant dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of two million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents. And the general assistance warrant dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
All in favor? Four, zero, with one extension.
No, Mr. John.
That's me.
You're saying John?
Yeah, I am, yeah. All right, next, we have update, discussion, and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases, and personnel. First is discussion and action on a request from the Energy Committee to add information regarding the Green Home and Energy Show event on their website. So, we have John Lillybridge here. John, if you wanted to come right on up, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks so much. Um, so I'll go, uh, as quick as I can about, uh, the details of this show. Um, the Green Home and Energy Show, uh, does include a lot, a lot of the types of information that we have at our EV shows, um, but it basically includes much more than that. Um, it talks, uh, so the, uh, event location is in South Portland, uh, the Point Community Center. And in addition to having, uh, poster boards and other things for all sorts of companies, not just on, um. Uh. Topics related to transportation, they have, uh, home installments, um, and other, uh, energy or, um, uh, yeah, savings and cost, uh, upgrades. And so it really is a broad, um. Broad categories of ways that people, uh, can, you know, do their own research, uh, talk to professionals, and also talk to other people that are at the event, that are homeowners, that are going through the same. Uh, steps that they might want to consider in the future, whether it's, um, getting better, uh, insulation or upgrades, uh, for their homes, and. Uh, in addition to homes, there's also, uh, companies that can go there and, uh, find out, you know, could your business, uh, benefit from these, uh, changes or, or these resources? And they also have, um, at the event, in addition to, uh, like ours, test drives, uh, vehicles, um. Lawn equipment and other resources that are either, uh, new in the market or are electric options. Um, they also have, uh, presentations, uh, during the event that people can go to, um. Connect with other companies, uh, as well as, um, uh, individuals, uh, just to learn more about what's going on in the market, so. Uh, we would like to have that as a resource, even though it's coming up real soon, the, the date is April fifth. Um, to have that, uh, information accessible on our webpage, so that we can just inform the public if they are so interested in going to that event.
I think, I think it's great. I think a lot of people will be very interested in that, honestly.
Yeah, that's true. We really appreciate you bringing that forward, John, that we'll look forward to seeing it. Great.
So, I, I, we, it's, it's up there with the publisher.
Second. All in favor? Five zero. All right, next, we have discussion and action on a memorandum of agreement. Nope, what's happening? Did you say something?
No.
No, all right. I've had some else, want to go, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, next, we have discussion and action on a memorandum of agreement between Kenny Bunk Light and Power District and Town of Wells for dispatching services. Mike, you wanna?
Sure, be happy to. Um, this involved, uh, Kenny Bunk Light and Power, um, in their off-hours. Uh, used to be dispatched by Kenny Bunk Court, um, due to some staffing challenges and all the Kenny Bunk Courts experiencing. Kenny Bunk Light and Power approached our police department, um, Chief Putnam, and, uh, talked with us about the idea of, um, our personnel dispatching in their off-hours. Nighttimes, weekends, and that would be basically having a call list, reaching out to their on-call personnel, having radio communication with their trucks that may be dispatched during those hours. Um, and, uh, so, uh, Chief Putnam worked with, uh, their manager, and Leah, uh, helped us on the contractual agreement that you see before you tonight. Um, and this is for, uh, obviously for a fee. Um, that we're proposing to do that, and I am looking for the fee, it's like three thousand and some odd dollars for the first from Ma- uh, March until. Correct, and then ten thousand dollars for the, per year after that. Yeah. Um, and so. Um, that's the proposal. Um, Chief has talked with her dispatch supervisor, they feel they have plenty of bandwidth to be able to handle this. Um, and, uh, we don't feel as though it would be a terribly heavy lift nor negatively impactful to our personnel.
I'd be willing to do this for free if Kenny Bunk Light and Power moved into Wells.
So noted, we'll make your call.
A lot of discussion from the board on that?
No, sounds good. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between Kenny Bunk's Light and Power District and the Town of Wells for dispatching services unauthorized town manager to sign the agreement.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and action to schedule a joint public hearing between the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Review Committee on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
And as mentioned last evening, we're hopeful that you would entertain at your next meeting, uh, this public hearing, which would be April first. And that will allow us to be able to move sufficiently to get this on the warrant before the voters.
Yeah.
Any discussion settled yet?
Yeah. I move to schedule a joint public hearing between the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Review Committee on April first, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Two oh eight Sanford Road and the Littlefield Meeting Room on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action on the bid award for seasonal landscaping services. Steve, why don't you come right on up?
Good evening, so, uh, I'm looking to award a bid for, uh, seasonal landscaping, um, which, uh, we received two bids for. Um, and after reviewing, uh, the two bids that we did receive, I was making a recommendation to accept the bid from, uh, Dean Radskill, what, what? Land State Services, uh, for an amount of ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Steve, just a request, um, the next time we have a bid come up, would you mind just submitting those over for our packet, so we can review them?
I, I'd have those, I, I caught today that it's not in your packet.
Okay, sorry.
What I, what I do have in the bid sheets, just so you're aware, the second bid, we only received two, was from Smiley Landscaping LLC, also a Wells-based. Um, operation, their amount was ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. So, Steve's recommendation of Ramsdale is in fact, uh, a Wells-based company and the, the cheaper price.
What, what is the bid amount?
Uh, it's.
Would you repeat your amount?
Ramsdale was ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. All right, are we ready for?
Guess we'll draw any similar information.
That's all right.
I move to accept and award the bid for seasonal landscaping to Ramsdale's, uh, landscaping for ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars.
Fifty cents.
And fifty cents.
All in favor? Five zero. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have discussion and action to approve a request from the National Multiple Slurrocal Society for the annual Great Main Getaway Cycling Event through Wells on August second and August third, twenty twenty-five.
This is an event that has occurred over many years, um, talking with our police and fire personnel leadership team, uh, absolutely no challenge for us, uh, they're, they're very, very easy to work with.
Okay, great. Great.
Yeah.
I move to grant the request from the National Multiple Slurrosa Society for the annual Great Main Getaway Cycling Event. Through Wells on August second and August third, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the town manager to obtain the required proof of insurance and sign the approval form.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action on updates personnel and committee assignments, resignation, and issues. The first, would Mike, you wanna?
Sure, be happy to. It's just, uh, so Andrea Casilla-Loris. And, uh, common spelling, and, uh, so she joins our team, um, in Town of Wells as a new library director, subject to your confirmation. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in History degree and a Master's of Library Science, which she obtained from the University of North Texas. Andrea has held positions to include Head of Youth Services for the Great Main Public Library, Head of Circulation for the Great Public Library. Adult Services Librarian for Thalmud Main Memorial Library, and the name may be familiar, because she was the Adult Services Librarian for Wells. Um, a position she held for more than three years. Um, it was really very clear, I, I was fortunate to sit in on each of the interviews of the candidates. Um, she comes with great experience, a tremendous amount of energy. Um, she came to our department head meeting today, and, uh, I, you know, she's gonna be blending in very well with us as a teammate. Uh, she has a really good vision, she's very astute about the technology that is evolving in library services. And, um, I think she'll be very instrumental in helping us in a strategic plan, not just for the library, but as we vision forward for the community.
Elsa?
No.
Okay, I move to confirm the town manager's appointment of Andrea Casilla-Liannes as the library director for the Wells Public Library.
Second, all in favor?
Five zero. Thank you, Mike. Next, we have appointment of Andre Brasso as an interim trustee to the Wells Sanitary District Board of Trustees to fill a vacant position. With term to expire in June twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? We have motion?
I move to appoint Andre Perse- Brasso as an interim trustee to the Wells Sanitary District with term to expire in June twenty twenty-five.
Second, all in favor? Five zero. And lastly, we have the resignation of Anthony Turigny from the Recreation Commission.
I move to accept the resignation of Anthony Turigny from the Recreation Commission.
Second. All in favor? Five zero. Next, we have discussion and action with accept donations and requests. First is a fifty-dollar donation from Patricia Laurie to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. Next, we have, uh, the two, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Nick and Laura Tri- Carr, uh. Or Carcio, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sure I didn't pronounce that right, the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar donation from Hal and Karen Muller to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a fifty-dollar donation from Gary and Tanya Freeman to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Linda and Donald Peterson to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-thousand-dollar donation from Janice Albright to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a two-hundred-dollar donation from Donna and Leo Cullen to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Jeff and Vicky Withem to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-thousand-dollar donation from Anchor Real Estate Company to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a fifty-dollar donation from Daniel DeVita to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a ten-dollar donation from Mary Ford to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Joe and Linda Cogshell-Sarals to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Dawn and Leah Gonyer to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Rod and Jenny Sakash to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Suzanne and Billy Kuchar to the, um, or, yeah, Kocher, to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Ken Olson and Lisa Neff to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-thousand-dollar donation from William Webb to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a twenty-five-dollar donation from Paula, uh, Hey, Hag- Hagafian Russo, the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center, I'm sorry for butchering your, your name there. Uh, we have a five-hundred-dollar donation from Walter and Judy Deskos to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Bob and Wendy Burns to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Kathy Walsh to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Liz Clough to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a twenty-five-dollar donation from, uh, Joan Hager to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-dollar donation from Nancy Steves to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Cody Cousins to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Elizabeth Goodwin to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Kevin Lantini to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a twenty-five-dollar donation from David Kruger to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Michael Terracotta to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Deborah and Howard Weinberg to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Laura and Joseph, uh, La- Lapecchio to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Chuck and Pauline Se- Sevill to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar, uh, dollar donation from Nick Philbrook to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-dollar donation from Leo and Diane Hullett to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Nick Crombie to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-thousand-dollar donation from Doug and Ann McDougal to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from James and Patricia, uh, Francoire to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Wendy Keating to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Dale and Julie Levitt to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Carol Steinhardt to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a twenty-five-dollar donation from Lucy and Anthony Baker to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Joan and John Colbert to the Town of Wells for Founders Park, uh, Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Eileen Fortune and David Hay- uh, Agen to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center in memory of Tony Salufo. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Joyce and Bill, uh, Via Shelley, the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. We have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donate, uh, donation from Brian Harrington to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center. Lastly, we have a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Brent Albright to the Town of Wells for Founders Park Community Center.
Donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second, all in favor? Now I know how Brian Tooney's all.
I'd also like to express my thanks to the community for this pouring of support to this this worthy cause. Um, please stay tuned. We're going to be announcing an event coming up in May. It's going to be the Taste of the Coast. It'll be held at Lettong Farm. I don't have the date for you tonight, but please stay tuned. We will be. Coming forward with that very, very soon.
Have you considered um, getting a thermometer?
Yeah, once we're through the planning board process, that's exactly the plan.
Okay, yes, sounds brilliant.
All right, next we have discussion and action to approve minutes of the February twenty-fifth and March fifth, twenty twenty five, Seligman's meeting. I will take these individually.
I move for approval of the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty five, Seligman meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor? Four, zero, Tim, I didn't.
Yeah, that's right, sorry.
Tim hasn't attached, you know, we got it.
I move with approval of the March fifth, twenty twenty five, Seligman meeting minutes.
Second, all in favor?
I have to say, I wasn't here.
Tim, were you there?
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, right. So that's, I assumed that was a affirmative. I didn't see it.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Four, four's girl one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't see by Kathy. All right, moving on, we have new business. For the second time this evening, we have open to the public for ten minutes. Aside. Yes, sir, please come on up.
Uh, I'm asking if the town would consider. Uh, having uh, handicap, several handicap spots at the harbor. Between the gazebo and the pavilion. So that handicap people can sit in their car in view and listen to the concerts. And uh. Right now. If you don't get down there, you're going to be spotted by the boondock and they can't hear. Uh, my wife is handicapped. She has a hard time walking. She likes to listen to it. So. I know if you've got a handicap sign where the trail is. But uh, it'd be handy to have it. Where you can sit in the car and view the stage.
Yeah, we said something like that, temporarily. We had, oh, absolutely, we're gonna work with the police department on that. That's a nice thought. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else in the public like to speak? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the town manager's report. Any good news?
Always a really bad spot when everybody's ready to go. So I also can be abbreviated. The good news is was about Andrea. Um, so I'll incorporate that. Um, another good news is our facility study uh, kicks off tomorrow afternoon. Uh, we have a Zoom for the department heads and departments that'll be. Uh, considered in the facility study and we're gonna be um, going about a space needs assessment um, tool that uh, will be implemented. So that's that's underway. Um. Two hundred and fifteen building permits have been issued, and again, this is very abbreviated. Uh, today, Motor Vehicle visited um, our finance um, office to look at the procedures that they will be implementing. For all the licensed plates that will be coming in. Um, remember, we have to issue a couple of thousand of those before long in concert with everything else that they'll be doing. The great news is the report was how well organized that department is and how well they organize their plates and all. So it was really positive news. Uh, from Motor Vehicle. Tax reminders will be going out in inserts very shortly. Uh, the Beach Pass Express, as they said, is due to arrive tomorrow. It will not be open for anyone who thinks anything about it will be four to six weeks away for passes. But it'll be arriving. Um, fire department's been real busy. They had one day with twenty calls in just a single day surrounding windstorms, but two hundred and ninety-five four calls so far. Um, down just a fraction from last year, which is a good thing, um, but not by much. Um, the harbor is starting to come to life. Uh, five additional boats will be provided. Um, custom boats has completed the main floats and they'll be delivering those soon. As we know, Mike's done a real nice job down there and he's been having some conversation. Um, with certain state and federal officials, we may be able to um, expand from our current one hundred and fifty uh, vessels. To uh, upwards of two hundred or so, um, with no problems which we have room for, which that'll be quite a, quite a harbor for us. Uh, police department reports a free rabies clinic hosted by the Wells Police Department at York County Community College. Will be held on April twelfth from nine A M. to noon. And the annual beach cleanup will take place on April nineteenth. Participants will be meeting at the high school. Um, at ten A M. as opposed to the activity center in the past. And uh, so it's always a great turnout and helps clean up our beaches. Um, and Steve reported uh, road sweeping began today, which is a great sign for spring. And the contractors working on the beach area with catch basin cleaning coming up very shortly. Um, beach mats will be rolling out, um, and other seasonal items um, will be deployed along the beaches. Um, ahead of the return of some of our piping plovers. Um, road postings will be lifted tomorrow. Uh, the uh, frost has come out. Um, so we're in good shape and some unpaved roads in town, including Chiny Road. Um, Green Road and Drake's Island Roads um, are scheduled for grading as early as next week to get the uh, the bumps and lumps out of those. Um, nomination papers remain available um, till April eleventh. Uh, I mentioned Andrea. Uh, the bike clinic will be held on March twenty-fifth at the library, offering participants general bike knowledge and repair tips. Kim is gonna be hosting the uh, Kim's Blind Glass Painting Craft Noon. Um, which will take place on Thursday, um, two days from now at two P M. That sounds kind of fun. A A R P is continuing to offer tax assistance at the library on Mondays and Tuesdays uh, until April eighth. And Rebecca reports that the kickoff training for our piping plover monitors will take place right here, April fourteenth at six P M. And uh, Steve, special edition will be coming out of the newsletter. And part of the initiative on that is to help highlight. Uh, the whims and fire department um, collaboration and, you know, the idea of potentially merging those two entities. We feel it's really important to continue to get the information out to the public about what that entails. Um, so Rebecca will be putting out a special edition. Um, the Veterans Committee. Um, meeting was held last Tuesday. Discussion continues around the Memorial Day Parade and including ordering some new grave markers. Um, the train station, we're looking at new signage and badges uh, there. And in the near future, I'm gonna have Dave Johnson come in and talk about some of the radio um, services that he's been installing. At Town Hall, which will be very effective with we lose communication um, in our community. You've done a great job with that, so I'm gonna help highlight that.
Thank you. He's been working hard on that. That's really coming along. That's another thing too. We've had a lot of community donations over there.
Several thousand dollars.
Just one other thought, John. We've been talking about giving a lot of.
Um, technology. We will have a technology workshop for the board because I know there's a couple of uh, iPads and computers and emails that aren't working. So I want to try to get Ben and perhaps Chris Baez, who's hiding in the other room for us tonight broadcasting, um, to be able to help um, some of that troubleshooting.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mike. We appreciate that. Um. Next, we have uh. Let me make sure I just get something here. Nope, we had the York County Budget Committee caucuses uh, Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five. At the York County Government Building in Alfred, correct?
Right. And I'm I'm the representative. Uh, my term is not up, so. Uh, I'm actually having surgery the day before, so I won't be attending the caucus that I told. It's okay, but.
How was your experience with that last year?
Oh, it's fun.
Yeah, good.
Thanks, Doctor.
All right, next we have the uh, select board comments, either subcommittee reports or individual select board member comments. Anybody have anything?
I just, uh, just real quick, I was gonna do a program. The Wizard of Oz is at the high school this week. Uh, I make sure I have it right. Tomorrow at three thirty. Thursday and Friday at six thirty and Saturday at two P M. It's it's a really cool production, actually. Kids do a great job. I went in today. See the teaser that they were doing for the elementary school kids. I I it was pretty neat to see, so.
How did the elementary school kids like it?
They loved it. They were a little scared of the uh. The Wicked Witch was a little scary. Might have been a couple of incidents of people running out. But uh, you know, but other than that, it was, it they, the the director, Andy Lopez, and then he's proved a spectacular job.
Oh, Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, yeah, so it's quite a production, so if you got a chance, go see it. It's pretty cool.
Well, anybody else have anything? All right, well, that, we have motion.
No, I was just gonna say, I've got a uh. History Trail Association meeting in the morning. All that, more information.
Uh, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Five, zero. Great, thanks. We'll see everybody next time.